Free meeting for June. Newest commissioner. Tenured. Great to have, thank you for the willingness to join us. It's hard to find people. No, no, I don't think that that's a reflection. Yeah, yeah, it'll do it in about three meetings. Yeah. All right, well, I guess we'll go over some of the items that we have because we have very many, but maybe we have some questions we can discuss. Rick, did you have anything before we dive into those? Okay, thank you. Liam, anything you need to add before you, before you take a rest?
No, thanks, thanks.
Don't get too comfortable. All right. Commissioners, anything in particular you want to discuss before we start the items? Okay. Well, Mr. Burton, I don't know if you want to give us some, some of your expertise here. But you don't have a choice, really.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
It's a good thing. So Jacqueline Estates Cluster Subdivision. You guys might remember it was tabled back last month, so a month ago. Just to kind of remind you of what the request was or to explain for our new commissioner, we have a request for, maybe it would be helpful if I shared my screen. First show you what the existing subdivision looks like.
It looks better that way.
And I, and I apologize. I don't, when, when we look at, when I upload this plat, the, the big plat, when I realized when you guys printed out or when we printed out for you, if you're not using the right program, it will just zoom right in and not, and not format for you. So that's, so I guess maybe something we've got to figure out or be cool if you guys could get iPads, right? That would be pretty cool. Because then you could just see it, but electronically, here's the file. So let me show you what the existing subdivision looks like. You've got a cluster subdivision which is, so typically you've got smaller lots than the zone normally allows. This is the A2 zone, A1 zone that allows for minimum of 40,000 square foot lots, right around an acre with 150 feet of frontage. Back in 2015 and 16, this was platted. We've got some common area just to the south here, and then you've got six residential lots. They're about 14,000 square feet. Well, what happened was the developer installed the roads and gave property, give the property, sold the property, we've got homes built. And the owners are saying, well, the developer hasn't installed the common area amenities, which are supposed to include like a, like a playground and some horse pasture and a community garden and like a trail. And back when this subdivision recorded, the county planning office required the developer to put up a, 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 a financial guarantee and for the open space improvements, it was $30,000. Now that the developer hasn't installed those improvements and we're kind of looking back realizing, well, probably we should have asked for more than than 30,000 or he should have put up more than 30,000. That is, we, we still have that amount or really close to that amount to be able to go to these improvements. But we don't think it's really enough to install all of what was planned for the open space in this common area. And in speaking with the members of the HOA, at least a few of them, not all of them, but a few of them said, well, we would, most of them said, we would actually prefer to own the common area as part of our lots. So is there, is there a way to amend the plat to allow that to happen? And what, what they've come up with is a, what we call a lot averaging subdivision where some lots are smaller than 40,000 square feet and some lots are bigger. So that it averages out to equal the minimum required by the zone with all lots. Sorry, let me see. So let me show you the plat that's been proposed. And I'll just say last month it was tabled because we were unsure if the widths met the minimum requirements when it came to the lot averaging. So what, what the result was after that meeting there, the applicant surveyor, I just need to wait a minute. The applicant's surveyor came up with a plat and they're actually showing how the lot averaging is working here. Like, here we go, here we go. Okay, so you can see the lots seven, eight, nine, 10 are incorporating common area. They did have to go extend east a little bit to get an area to make that happen. The last time, last meeting, the issue was lot 11 had some common area that went to roughly what, right over here. The reason for that is because there's a landscaping strip there and that, that owner would have preferred that to be common area. But it turns out they needed more lot width last time overall. And so they took that common area and reduced it to be able to, to meet the width requirement. And we've also got a table that shows the lot average width is 150 feet and the average area is 40,000 square feet. I will let you know, I, I have heard from a, one of the owners since the last meeting, they let me know that they are not on board, though they may have been previously, they're currently not on board and are not planning on signing this plat. Which in the past, we've had that happen before where maybe there's been some family ownership in a trust and, and someone in that trust didn't want it to be approved. There is a way to allow the subdivision to move forward. We just can't let it record until all parties sign. But I just need you to be aware of that. There is at least one owner that has said, that has changed their mind. Any questions for me on this one? No, they're all, all the lots are owned and all the homes are built. So there's so, so, so they actually own it. So it, and, and originally it, it was common area. So the HOA owned it in, in common with each other. Now the HOA is saying, well, now that we own it, we would like to own it individually and incorporate it in as part of our, our own lots. So that common area would just go away. Taxes will go up. I think they were still paying some tax on it as common area, but it definitely will go up if it's added as part of their residential lot.
Mike, I got two concerns. One, why aren't we holding the developer's feet to the fire? He said he was going to put in amenities. They bought lots to get these certain amenities. We're seeing too much of this and, and I have a great concern. My second concern is if one, one of the owners in here is not willing to move forward on it, this is kind of an all or nothing deal in my eyes. Because it doesn't move forward unless they're all in favor of it. So.
I got a comment on that too, but I, I tend to agree with what was just said. It's the thing that bothers me, this idea about perpetual easements. You know, I, when this thing first come up many years ago, I thought, well, it'll be a long time before we get one. Hasn't been that long. And I guess the, the word perpetual is only good until it isn't. And so my take on this is I don't want to see that word hooked in where open space. Just don't think it, it, it's healthy in, in my mind, it's a piece of property. The best use is got no problem with that. But the problem really is what my friend here on the left said is, is the whole thing was designed around the time of the, what, what, what the zoning was. And you know what? Inflation's hurt everybody. Truck drivers, you and I and everybody, and we don't ask for any relief anywhere. I think in my mind, like this at all, actually. So that's my two bits.
Have that adds to this is it really creates some odd shapes. And, and I'd, I'd almost, if they'd have come in here with a subdivision plat and said, we want to subdivide this, I'd almost, I'd be equally concerned, but I'd be, I would probably be more forgiving with something like that than having this be piecemealed over time, which I think is what's going to happen. And, and I agree that, that we're going to see more of this. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind. It, it just, I don't know, it just doesn't sit very well because of, of the perpetual statement with me as well. And, and how, how that can be manipulated or taken away, which is fine. I get that. That's a legislative item and I get that that can happen, but still struggling with this.
Comment, Chair?
Yes.
I'm in favor of it. If they have deed restrictions, so the future property can't be developed unless it meets the criteria. And it's something that maybe we ought to learn from, that when we do common space and there's amenities, a certain percentage has spooned with each lot. Or thereof, so that we don't, yeah, so that we don't get burnt, they don't get burnt in the end. We probably won't be having this discussion if he did what he said.
Well, and, and I think that some steps have already been taken. I think that the, the zoning's been modified to make sure that there's more money available. And then I think in our new general plan going forward to where we're working with the parks district to, to kind of take some of these common areas, especially these smaller common areas and, and somehow roll it into the parks district. I think that that's going to help us a lot going forward too. But I agree with you. I, I agree with your comments.
Chair, I, yeah, I agree with what's been said and I, I am not in favor of approving this based on, I mean, what's been said, but also, I mean, it, it's pretty clear why someone's against this. This is not an equitable distribution. You know, some people get more land and some people get less and it's obscure, obscure boundaries. As far as a solution, because I think this is a difficult problem, we, we looked to the new general plan. I think there are opportunities and when we change the general plan, that it, it could be rezoned and then at that point, that common, that common space can be developed, but then it also gives us, like you said, a chance to, to roll, roll some of it into the parks district or ask for some sort of a exchange. So either this is all developed and land somewhere else to swap to the park district, but the portion that wasn't given to us by the developer, you know, this, this development that we didn't get can be, I think, recovered through, through the, the new, the new plan. So we could table it and say, we don't want to see this until the new general plan is here. If it's, or just let them know you can keep bringing it, but the votes probably could be no until we have a new general plan or a new, well, this, I guess this in general is not something we're interested in, but.
And we have the issue of the one person.
Oh, for sure. That's, that's why I think we table it is, you know, until they can bring all, all, either all parties on board because it's not going to go anywhere. The, you know, if we voted, vote this down, then a lot of these comments don't get heard at county commission. And, you know, because though, if we vote against a positive recommendation, they're still going to go in front of county commission with it. So I disagree with the, I mean, it's probably a good place for homes, but when this was brought in as a subdivision, they got smaller density so that they could have open space. You know, one of the big things we need to preserve is open space. And that's where, you know, they should look more at pushing, or not pushing, but offering stuff like this to the parks district. I don't know if it's going to be in Rogers general plan or where they want something, but guess what? That might be a way to get some of these amenities. And I, I'm totally against us starting to chop up all of our common areas and building hounds on it. I mean, they went through and they went through the process and then they got the zoning they got with the open space. And, and that was what the process was at the time. I don't feel that now the general plan's been changed. They can come start digging up these common areas or open spaces that they were granted a higher density to leave open space. Now the plan's changed. Well, they've already went through their process and I don't feel they should go again.
Bren, kind of in counter to that, I, I agree with your saying, what you're saying, but that's why I'm not saying homes go in there unconditionally. I think homes go in, but a large portion of that money has to be returned back to the parks district. Because what we're finding in our general plan is that this was not a good idea. And these small common areas are not advantageous. And so it's probably best if these small common areas become homes and then larger parcels. And so I'm not saying eliminate the responsibility to the parks district. I think we need to still hold them accountable. But I think let's make the planning more effective. So, so I agree and just kind of alter that idea.
I do got one more question for Steve though. So I noticed on the original plat, lot number one was supposed to be built and, and go back to that original platform. I can read it better. But it's supposed to meet the, the moderate income housing plan down there in writing. In the bottom left-hand corner of that plat, it states that by changing this now, and I mean, everyone knows values beyond crazy, but adding more square footage to that lot, is that going to throw that requirement that was recorded on the first plat out? And did they meet that, I guess, is the question?
So they did meet that when they, before that was built, we did have, there was a deed restriction and we did have to verify income. I don't know how increasing lot size would mean. So, so I don't know, I can't remember exactly what the covenant said. If it said the first person or they have any person that ever lives there. I, I, I kind of think it said the first person that builds there.
I kind of think you're right.
Yeah, I don't know how he would restrict selling it, but, but we did verify that they met the.
So it doesn't carry on through that once they sell it?
I, I'd be happy to check and.
It'd be a good thing.
At some point, yeah.
I, my vote on this is to table it tonight and, you know, I mean, we got to do it with diligence form and timing, but I think, you know, we give them table it with the time of six months and get everybody on board with it so that it can continue to move forward and, and, and I like the comment of, you know, looking at it with the new general plan as well. So.
Chair, can I ask a question for my own naivety? So my question is, this is going to benefit three people, right, to get more property for their lots. When in my assumption, a common space was for the whole development, the whole HOA. So how does that affect? I mean, and they bought these lots on the premise that they're going to have a park, a garden and whatever else, right? So now only three people are going to benefit to having extra space where the rest of the neighborhood is not going to benefit that. Is that true or is that a wrong assumption on my part? But that, that's where I would have a problem with it. Buy it up more than just three lots. Oh, okay. Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on that item? And we have a couple of minutes just until the meeting starts for the other item unless there's more, more. Not, not, not in the pre-meeting, Roger.
Chair, question. I don't know if you discussed this before I arrived. Are we having another general plan meeting after this or is it just?
Work session.
Work session.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not sure if you recall this development came back before you in August of last year. The developer is looking for a recommendation of final approval. The planning commission gave him preliminary approvals conditioned upon a few requirements, which he has met. And so that's why we're back before you with the planning approval. 21 lots, a lot average subdivision, an emergency egress to the west with a development agreement that's currently in process between planning and the attorney's office and the developer.
Two, did you get an updated letter? I, I know some different things are going on with the sewer, but you'd mentioned that we'd have a letter from the health department at the meeting?
Yes, and it should have been included as an exhibit. So.
No, it wasn't. It just said in red down at the bottom, it said, updated septic feasibility will be presented in the meeting.
Yes.
So. If you got that and then that's the only thing I had, I, I just had one minor change to the recommendation, but I don't have an issue with this.
The updated letter states that they recommend the bounce system versus the agreed for those particular lots.
And it's got the updated dates?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the only thing, just to stay in uniformity with the recommendations, I think that staff recommendation number one should be before they get final approval from the county commission. So it's all approved at one time because it's going to have to be a development agreement. That that egress is, is approved at that same time county commission approves the subdivision, not at the time they execute the, or not at the final plat record when they record the plat, my only comment.
Which item was that?
It just says that prior to final plat reportation, they're going to have to, county commissioners have to approve the development agreement for it. So it might as well, in my eyes, stay all as one. Everything else is prior to approval from county commission anyways, those other conditions. So just staying in uniformity.
Condition two says prior to plat recordation. It's only the last one that says prior to receiving final government.
No, you're right. I, I, you're right. I didn't see that. But I mean, they've got to have an escrow before they can go to plat. So I'm okay with number two, the way it is.
But number one, you'd like to see as, prior to.
Or just with, with approval of the development agreement at county commission. Because it's, I'm, I'm assuming they'll go hand in hand when they go there. So.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Ken. The hour is upon us. Welcome to the June 14th Western Weaver County Planning Commission meeting. Have a couple of items on our agenda tonight. Let's start out with Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. And everyone is present and accounted for on the commission. Thanks for that as well. And I would like to welcome our newest commissioner, Casey Nabel. Welcome. And thank you for, for joining us. We, we appreciate that. Good helps hard to find. Stick with us for a while. All right. On that note, so did anyone have any comments or concerns about the minutes from April 12th and May 10th? I think that the April 12th had an adjustment.
I reviewed it and it's.
Okay. And any, any other comments on those minutes or the May 10th minutes?
Okay, Chair, I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Okay, have a motion to approve minutes. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? I oppose. Minutes motion passes. Thank you very much. Move down our agenda to petitions, applications and public hearings. Item number two, administrative item, 2.1 LBJ 022222, consideration in action. Yeah. On a request for final plat approval of Jacqueline Estates Phase One amended subdivision. Mr. Burton.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. You may remember this item was before you last month. This is a request to amend cluster subdivision known as Jacqueline Estates Phase One. I will mention phase two, just to the east over here. It expired a few years ago. So this, this land isn't tied to phase one at all. We're over here on 2,200 south and 4,900 west in the A1 zone. The, the initial request was to amend common area and to, to take it in as part of lots seven, eight, nine, 10. Previously, we were called lots one, two, three and four. A little bit of background on this. I think I explained it last time, but just as a refresher, a little background on this one. Back in 2016, this subdivision plat recorded and there was a bond and escrow for some open space that open space was never installed by the developer. The HOA approached the developer and requested to have that bought. Have the, the common area be bought and be part of these lots. The reason for that is because the open space improvements were never installed. And, and they collectively would have agreed to just make that part of their lots. And if they all are willing to sign the plat and if the county commission is willing to relinquish the open space easement, then that, that could happen. Now, I will mention that the county commission could still allow this to happen without relinquishing the easement. There could still be an easement over top of this area. The request is to have that easement moved so that some buildings could go back there and some, some other uses. Let's see, last time it was tabled because it was unclear if the lot averaging standards were met. And since then, there was a change to specifically to lot 11 that, that actually got rid of a little bit of common area. And now the owner of lot 11 will actually own some, some landscaping area. And you can see over here in the corner how they're meeting the lot averaging requirements. The applicant is requesting that the planning commission make a recommendation with the county commission so that this, so that this project can move forward. Now, I will, I will let you know a few things. One, initially, as I reviewed this as staff, the reason I'm recommending that it be approved is because if the HOA collectively owns that common area and they want to change it to something else, and, and if that's allowed by ordinances, then I feel like, I feel that, that it should be done. We're talking about six owners. They are the only owners of that common area. And if they all agree to it, they'd rather have it be something else other than what a developer didn't install, then, then I, I personally would feel fine with that. That's why that's my recommendations for approval. I'll let you know also, kind of since this recommendation, we've had a, an owner that is approaching me and said that they're not willing to sign the plat. So that will need to happen before this can record. That definitely doesn't need to hold up the formal approvals. But I just wanted to let you know that. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners. Do we have a, an applicant present? Okay. Does any one of the applicants want to speak? Want to give, come on up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record.
Milton Todd Mitchell, I live at forty-eight sixty-three Jacqueline Park. Like a. The developer just is not. Let it be taken care of. Um, it was one of the others that. With. Should have been. Beautiful, the other side. And it, it was also a land swap. And, and it was also a land swap. Some of it was on the south side there. Over to the other side. Pretty much everybody's.
Property, this all. What's going on with?
Well, I mean, I've. You know, I'm right. This year.
Commissioner? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Steven, I think we have a question for you.
Steve, so if the conservation easement stays in place, will that prohibit them from building any structures on this? Like, could they put barns on it and shops and stuff like that if? If the conservation easement stays?
The, uh, to answer that, I've, in my staff report, I cite that, that actual.
Sorry, should have read it.
Easement, no, that's okay, I think it's good to ask because I don't know, um, until I read this. It says, uh, from the original subdivision is, is the develop, this would be the developer granting this, we hereby convey, sorry, grant and conveyed to Jacqueline Estates HOA. Inc., Owners Association, all those parts or portions. Those attractive land designated as common areas to be used for recreation, open space purposes, for the benefit of each member of Jacqueline Estates HOA, Inc., in common with all others. In the subdivision granted and dedicate to the governing entity a perpetual open space right and easement on and over the common areas to guarantee to the governing entity that the common areas remain open and undeveloped. Except for recreational parking and open space purposes as need be approved by the governing entity. So just reading that makes it sound like they wouldn't be able to build anything on it, um, unless they were to come in and also change their, uh, open space plan.
Why aren't we changing the old open space plan by now letting them privately own that, similar to what's at Sunset Equestrian?
So that won't, so Sunset Equestrian, we had, we had an individual come in and amend the open space plan for their own open space.
Oh, we did that.
So there, there were individual open space parcels, and in this case, um, the request is to get rid of the easement and also. Change the, the boundary of each lot. The easement isn't, um, eliminated or relinquished by the county commission, and they may still be able to own it, but there's still an easement on there, they can be able to necessarily build anything on it.
We increases. Lot line built. I assume. It's a just. Hey, leave it. Stay there. I'm just kind of, I'm struggling. I guess that's my comment.
Chair, I have a comment, and maybe this will be a question for applicants, I, I'm struggling with the same concept, if it needs to stay in conservation right now, all of the owners own it in an HOA. And, um, are collecting HOA dues, as we learned at the last meeting, so it can be maintained by the HOA dues, now the improvements were not put in by the developer. But right now it is owned by the owners, and it can be maintained by the dues that the owner, that the HOA would have, I, I'm sure they have a. I can't, yeah, by their, their covenants, yeah. So I, I guess I'm, I'm struggling with the idea that it has to be cut up and owned individually when it's owned collectively so that it can be a collective parcel, I mean, the intent was for it to be a collective pres- preserved parcel. And it can be maintained that way through the HOA, which was the original intent, now granted, it, the developer did not put in his development and, and, uh, that's. Unfortunately not something we can address, but. Serving land and it's still can be used in other capacities, I guess.
Comment, Chair.
I think pride and ownership would take over and all the land. And as my mother taught me, fences make the good neighbors. And there's a subdivision in the entire state is a full of fences. I don't think, see that as a legitimate reason to pull them up, the only reason I see to hold them up is total consent from everybody. And, uh, it sounds like they've worked that out, and so I, I see we could pass this along so they didn't have to come back. As long as they have all the signatures to take to the county.
I agree with your comments, Commissioner, I think as well, I think we put that as a condition, once they get consensus from all owners, and that's when it can go in front of county commission for approval. But then it comes back to that portion that I struggle with, with the open space conservation easement. I would like to see that stay in place, I mean, this, this subdivision come through and was approved. You know, as, as a cluster, right, or a PRUD with an open space. I am more than frustrated, I mean, I'm sure you guys are as well, that the developer did not do what he was supposed to. I mean, everyone knows inflation's gone through the roof, and who knows that thirty thousand would have bought that back in twenty sixteen when it should have been done, but we know it's not gonna happen today. So that's a huge frustration I have that, you know, hopefully, we as, you know, representation of the county and staff. We look to address that in the future so that doesn't happen, so, you know, whether it be, once so many lots go in, so much amenities are, are installed or, or whatnot, so that we don't have this happen, because you know. Uh, not speaking for you, but I would assume you bought the property because of what was gonna be around it as well, and, and I get your, I get the point of, you know. I'd rather do something with and own it and be able to put a horse or whatever back there and not have to deal with the, with the weeds and, and the HOA as well, so. I, I'm good with moving up forward, you know, hearing that now, hopefully there's a consensus, but those would be my two conditions, I'd like to recommend that it goes with it, it's. Before it goes county commission, that all, uh, all parties are on board with it, and that the conservation easement stays in place, even though it's individually.
I don't see how that can be, I mean, as far as we put a deed restriction in there, but the conservation easement, once these people take ownership of it. It is what it is.
But it'll be similar to, like Sunset Equestrian, uh, in my eyes, right, Steve, because, like you say, if they wanna put a building or something, they can come in and amend that plan, right? It still stays open, i- it's undevelopable, I guess, is what you would say, but they could still come and amend the plan and say, I wanna put a bard on under a shop or something like that.
That is true, depending on the exact language, um, I, I have to verify, you know, for. Sunset Equestrian, none of the own, none of the other owners owned it, any right or any, had any interest in this individual's open space. Where there is language granting and easement to the HOA, I don't know if the whole HOA would need to come back and, you know, for each lot owner, amend, be okay with amending that, so.
Amended their HOA agreement, you know, because it's changing essentially to, to do something similar, because, I mean, if I had that ground back there and I wanted to put a, you know, something on it, I'd like the opportunity to do it, but. I, I just, you know, this, I, I, where this is common area and it's gonna change, I just don't wanna see a set in a, setting a precedence moving forward as the general plan. Potentially changes to where all of a sudden then a whole bunch of develop, more development can happen on these common area pieces, you know, eh. Kinda, I, I can't remember who brought up the comment in the pre-meeting, but, you know, or maybe in one of the other discussions I'd had, but this is kind of, goes back to the discussion with the Parks District, you know. This, uh, it was you, Commissioner Wicker, and you know, hopefully through some of the stuff we have coming up in the general plan, where if they wanted to do that. Then they can buy the credits to the Parks District and, and keep that open space, you know, somewhere in the area that people can, can, you know. Enjoy and, because before long, they don't create any more land, and the more it gets gobbled up, we gotta still preserve some of that, so, that's my feelings.
There's, there's one interesting outtake that will, that will probably happen here. If this goes forward. The homeowners association will, will cease to exist because there's no reason for it anymore. Small common area, okay, all right, all right, and that's, and that's fine, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm the victim of one of those deals, so I know how that goes.
Final comment over here, Chair?
Yeah.
I don't think just because the developer coasted these individual citizens, that they should be punished for what may or may not happen in the future. They're not in control of that.
Yeah, and what, and what I'm, what I'm saying is not, is not a punishment, it's just, it's just that that's probably what's going to happen.
I'm with you on homeowners.
So, no, anyway. Your questions for staff?
Uh, Chair, I did have a question for staff, but I did wanna address the issue of, I mean, everyone bought into an HOA, and I don't see why it can't be maintained under the HOA, and I, I think that is the best. Solution, that the most ethical solution, and I, I'd like to maybe ask the homeowners why, or, uh, what are your, what are your feelings, why it can't be maintained with the HOA dues?
Chair, I have, I have the same question, same thoughts, sir.
So. So Chair, that's up to you.
Flip a coin, one of you come up.
Yeah. Give us your name and address, please.
It's on Brandon Lippman at forty-eight fifty-two Jacqueline Park Lane.
Thank you.
Um, so some of the concerns, as far as can it be maintained, there's, it's really just weeds. And maintaining it is really just mowing and keeping dead weeds to a minimum, which is ugly. And those weeds, there's a lot of fox tail, a lot of crap out there that spreads, and it comes all into our yards, so our yards is in the big pool weeds. And those that makes a mess, uh, but there's some other. Read it, say something real quick, because I need to, I'm forgetting something, there's a few. So I'm on the east side of the street as well as. Sit back here, and part of that, what was Phase Two that is now not Phase Two, is just developed, developer's land is just sitting there unmaintained. And that's directly against our two backyards, um, that beginning approaches into our yards, we get weeds, we get whatever, uh, they get it just unsightly. And in order for us to keep that maintained, AKA dead weeds just mowed down. At that point, it becomes two of us on one side are putting, you know, like, we both probably literally destroyed our own personal pretty nice lawnmowers, keeping that crap mowed down. For reason, our own gas, we're trying to, everybody is, because everyone's just trying to keep this maintained until we know. That it's trying to keep it presentable, we all have a nice, nice yard, trying to keep everything the same. So with part of the land swap, that undeveloped developer's land behind us would actually then also become ours, just like what behind there would become there, so that's just part of trying to keep things equitable for all six people. Whereas again, if the HOA maintained that side, could we then make the HOA pay and buy something to maintain the other side too that is not ours? So there's part of that.
Sure.
They're all. Some of the things that have been going on, it's been. Developer. To our HOA firm, this is personal banking. That became a repose, forced us to have partners. The, um. HOA will never go away because the road will not be accepted by the county, it's county messed up, and so the developer. On how wide they made the road. So that road will always be a private road, and therefore have to be maintained by the HOA. It, we would wanna keep the HOA also, just so that we can make sure that the property is maintained the way it should be, and so it looks, you know, it's, but we'd also like. Having ability if you want a horse or a cow or such a, you know, those sort of bigger areas, if we're, we're able to do that. The other thing is the conservation wave, for the most part, and then, and actually, it was one of the reasons that the descending persons, was descending at the time and didn't want more property because. Found out you couldn't build anything. But we really don't want anything built on it, that's why we moved there, but we'd like to be able to have the control of that ourselves, and if we wanted to put. Just a bit less of building or a shop or something back there, then we'd put all this stuff in to maintain the property, we'd like to be able to do that as well. We want the open area, I mean, we, we, we as an HOA. If anybody wanted to build it happening through our HOA to do it anyway, then. We want the open area. County, I mean, you guys probably were here, but the county is somewhat flawed, and as much as the developers, because they never follow. Make sure the developer did what they were supposed to do. We build a home, you guys send inspectors out, we make sure we do everything right. They didn't do anything with the developer. It's like getaway, it's whatever.
Did you address that with the county when it wasn't happening, did you petition the county?
Yeah, I, I've moved in after.
After, okay.
So I wasn't there to, to do it, or something would have happened, because I'm apparently the troublemaker, because he, he wanted to pay HOA fees, I'm going, what? I'm not paying you HOA fees for something you're not doing.
Who is in charge of the dues collection and the fund right now? You are, okay, so you're the HOA president?
I'm, I'm the treasurer.
The treasurer, okay, and, and I guess none of these comments have really answered my question, because it seems like with a functioning HOA, uh. Maintained and run by the residents, this land could stay the way it is and run the way it was intended, because the developer didn't put in the original improvements. But the maintenance would have always been the responsibility of the residents, and there would have been dues for that, so no one should be using their personal lawnmower. But, but that's, that's then, and this is now.
No, just until, until this, six months ago, he had control on us. He, he turned the HOA over to us about six months ago.
So from here moving forward, I guess, I, I still don't see why this land needs to be divided up, and it can't exist the way it is, because there is a functioning HOA at this point.
Well, again, county messed up, and things have changed, and the, and the owners now don't want the stuff, because everybody's gone out and bought their own. Playsets for the children, trampolines, all the stuff that we were supposed to have out there, so nobody wants that stuff out there. So we'd like to be able to repurpose the land for what we want it for.
And, and I still would say that you can use it for how you want to use it, I mean, it's not going to be developed the way that it was originally planned, you probably have different plans for it, but it can still stay. Uh, an easement, and there can be horses back there, and there are, um, then it can be maintained, and what's happened in the past is. Unchangeable, and that's not something I wouldn't, I, if nobody came to the county to let us know earlier, I, I'm not a part of this process, but the county generally lives on the residents to keep them informed.
So here's, I just wanna answer part of your question, so, first of all, with what you're telling me is, or us, what you're saying, to me is, the HOA can maintain and do whatever that way.
Yes.
The developer had a responsibility and a cost to do things with that land that they entered in.
Correct.
Okay, my first time living in an HOA, I didn't know all these things were supposed to be done, all I knew was that they were farming, he was letting farmers use our common area. To do hay and stuff. Either profiting or whatever, using water rights and everything on our land, as he, as he was also requesting us to pay HOA fees. Which I get a lot of that stuff technically, doesn't matter, but going forward, like you said, okay, this, that was then, this is now, then that means now, all we have is a big field with no water to water, any kind of grass. It's just wild dead weeds, we don't, when you say we can use that as an HOA and purpose that, we can't really do anything with it, it's just weeds.
That was used to water the land. That was used to water the land before.
They didn't allot enough water for that land to even do what the developer originally wanted, that was approved with what, a quarter acre water or something?
So the.
The water rights anywhere near enough to do anything with that.
But they were farming it without water rights?
They have water rights on the other side of the field, and they're basically flood irrigating and taking it and just flood irrigating it. Which that creates problems for us in a way, because A, the mosquitoes just get ten times worse. B, my house and his house are just right adjacent to where they flood irrigate. We both have crawl spaces that that groundwater accumulates, so we get, you know, more groundwater than we normally would. I mean, we're crawl spaces, which kind of creates a nuisance. We'd rather them farm that part anyways, just because at least that at least looks decent. But the part that's technically supposed to be the HOA that we own that they were going on and stuff, they kind of backed off that a little bit now, I don't know if they still farm like some of ours or not. Uh but they do still farm hacky, with the lining around us, and the part that is, they will need to wait down right now. Looks just like the undeveloped developer's land in front of our house, it looks just like, no water, so there's. We can't use it for anything, the developer, we would have done, he had to do there, at least be walking through back there supposedly, and pavilion, and this. We've made out to be all this nice stuff, but if you look into the details of the HOA stuff, what he proposed, he literally proposed for a subdivision. Forty-five hundred dollar Costco playset, he he proposed a fourteen by fourteen. Subdivision, and I don't know how he got away with all that, but even with proposing all this cheap stuff on these fences. None of that happened. And now, now apparently putting him, for one, he doesn't have any money to do any of that. So going forward, if we just have an HOA assume that's a camera, literally all we get is a weed patch to mow, that's it.
But that's what the residents get, so how are the residents going to maintain, I I just don't see how that's different.
I think, to your point Commissioner Wicker, it it wasn't installed the way it was supposed to be. So right now, if the HOA keeps it, then they have to build it to what it was and then maintain it, that's a cost that I wouldn't want to push on them. So the HOA in my eyes, yeah, to maintain it, it should, but are you gonna maintain a weed patch?
And that's what they're asking to do, is maintain a weed patch, like.
If they own it individually.
Take it individually, like I've been willing to. Now, the HR HOA fees are really difficult, and that's enough to maintain the world. Nothing else, and nobody wants to raise their HOA, it's not one of the people. Especially to mow beans. But if we have the ground individually, it's like if we haven't maintained it, and mow it, there's weeds in it, or at least it's not a weed patch. But then the the individual, only the developer responsible, and the HOA developer, to make sure that we're being paid. It's their responsibility individually. Nobody wants to feed the pigs to the, to the. But also, as you can see, also, because it kills our individual land, none of us are trying to go out and build thirty thousand square foot shops. But I personally, I don't mind, even if me personally, we could like build eight shops on shit or something, and if we can. That's something that I can get rid of some weeds, one, and have something useful back there. Two, if we hold those pieces of land, then if we do want to get, go to the borders and do something, individually, we can do that instead of. Me going out and getting some land, or getting producing bases of that, going out to HOA. Uh just putting on the HOA's land and making it HOA responsible, versus individually, because that affects that. That is also creating a personal, him or him coming out and saying, hey, man, you're not going to have to work back here. Whatever, like, enjoy yourself, get it off, this is the HOA, it's not yours, if you just kind of make it into the land.
It's like a lot of people bought into an HOA not knowing what an HOA was.
Yeah.
A lot of people do.
So can I interrupt, really sorry, I understand all of the personal concerns and how it affects personally, and I even understand that if it was your property. Designated as your own, you might have a little bit more pride in it, right, to where you're gonna take care of it more. But I still don't understand how that, all the personal conflicts aside have, or even put them together, how they really affect. The way that it was developed and what it was meant to be. I feel like buying into an HOA, you go into that understanding that, hey, we're this community, I'm buying them so for them to take care of it. And I still, with Sarah's um concern or question, I I still don't feel like that's been answered on how you owning it individually is gonna change. I feel like it should be the responsibility of your HOA right now, and if if it's not being taken care of by your HOA. That's who you should be going to, which is probably yourselves, right, because you're, it's a small community.
Correct, right now, but we bought into that, I knew what an HOA was, I understand that. What I didn't realize is that I was buying into an HOA that was ran by a developer, that A, never had property insurance the whole three years that I've been there until this started.
But but sorry, let me interrupt you again, I'm sorry, but all those, to me, and I'm sorry, I'm new at this. It seems like that's a legal matter that would be between the former HOA or developer, and doesn't really have anything to do with the the building design and how it was done. And at the beginning, I heard, we don't want development, we don't want to put any buildings on there, we just want to be able to have some horses back there and be able to do. And I still don't, with Sarah's question again, I don't understand how you're being prevented from doing that with your HOA. Like if, why can't your HOA come together and do that? I'm sorry. Right, yeah, that's what I mean, so as together as a community, which an HOA is, right? How come you can't get together and say, okay, we're gonna allow this? I mean, I understand there's different people, so it's hard to share common ground, but that's exactly what this is, is common ground that you'd be sharing anyways. Whether you were putting horses, or say the developer did exactly what he was supposed to, he put in a pavilion, the best pavilion you wanted, best park, everything. Your one neighbor's gonna leave their garbage there, and you're gonna be upset with it, it's gonna be the same thing whether the horse is crapping in the place you want to, or somebody's leaving their garbage, you're still gonna have the same conflicts. So I'm not sure, uh it just, the argument is hard for me to understand where you're wanting it to be individual. But yet not change anything other than being able to maintain it.
So if you look at lot eleven and twelve, which is me and Brandon, and it's the east north side. We assume the land, that's what it'll be, if we don't, that still isn't phase one. It's phase two common area. So it's not even the.
Okay.
So we're kind of stuck there, so that's why, to answer your question, we go through individually, if it encompasses all six houses.
Well, um. Right, but these buildings were developed in a a rural area. And it's expected that, sure, phase two may or may not happen at any point, so. The common area, whether it's on one side of the road or the other, is really not where the the point, and the fact that it is undeveloped behind you is. The beauty and the curse of building in rural Weaver County, ev- eventually, that'd be nice if it was developed. I I think we're getting off point here.
That that was proposed.
I think we're getting off point. So I think someone maybe decide, I think I know where I stand on it.
Sorry, can I say one more thing? To go with what you said, you know, buying, knowing about knowing, buying in an HOA. Again, when we all bought into this neighborhood, we bought in with the understanding that there was gonna be another phase. Walkway with nice things that were supposed to be, I get the whole curse, the nice thing, I get that. But I didn't, we we did not, none of us, none of us bought our houses knowing that there was just gonna be weed patches that we had to take care of. Individually or or HOA wise, that was not supposed to be.
Your dues would be more than fifty dollars a month, even if it was developed by the developer to the standard that you wanted. And so I guess that's why I'm confused, is you would have been paying.
Not our place.
Thank you, I I think we're gonna end the discussion there, I think that we have plenty of information.
I want to thank the individuals that understand where we're coming from, who are held hostage, and we appreciate all your time and your concerns. Just know that, like you said, you don't live there, we do, and it's been a struggle. Thank you guys.
Chair, if you're ready, I got a comment and a motion.
Do we have anything else for staff? Okay, do we, do we have any, any discussion for the commission? Oh, can I make a comment for the director?
Please, sorry. So the reason why phase two, one of the reasons why phase two did not proceed is because they didn't put in this open space. Um that was being held up, because they have to have everything taken care of with phase one before they can proceed with phase two. So that's one reason why phase two expired, is because they didn't take care of that. The other issue that we run into is that once the HOA bought this, took over. Um the open space from the developer, now that responsibility falls upon them. Because they are the owners of it, and this is what was approved. So um however you proceed with it today, um I just wanted those things laid out on the record. That we were trying to get that taken care of, and they couldn't proceed with phase two till that would happen. Um so, just for the record.
Okay, thank you Director. Legal, any concerns that you have that we should be aware of on this?
Uh my concerns, I've discussed with planning, planning staff, we talked in depth about it. And um I I can answer specific questions if you have questions, I can advise the HOA obviously. But uh if you do have any specific legal questions, I'm happy to talk, but discussed it with Steve.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for Director Gore or legal counsel? Okay, alright, now, I'll take a motion, and after we have the motion, we're gonna have, we'll have an opportunity for discussion.
Can I make a comment first?
Go ahead.
So, just for you guys, is, a lot of people don't know this, the county has a weed board, and they've created a new website, so. You know, it it's not gonna help you as the HOA, but say the developer's ground, if it's a mess and stuff like that, you can actually file complaints on there. If things aren't addressed, then the county likes to go in and do it and lean the property and stuff, so look, it's on the county website under the weeds. Um I see that kind of as a benefit as well, you know, the HOA will have covenants, but if it does go individual ownership, and you're mad and your neighbor's not taking care of his weeds. You could do the same thing and, you know, not going against the HOA, so with that, Chair, I'll make a motion. Chair, I'd like to recommend um a positive recommendation of this amended. Jacqueline Estates, Phase One amended subdivision, um this recommendation is a, for approval, is subject to all review agency requirements. And is based on the following conditions. And I'm gonna change your conditions a little bit, Steve, I want the condition that um all uh that the open space easement. Stay in place, and if they need to adjust the HOA agreement, to follow like sunset equestrian, so they could still build a building on it, but that it does stay, you know, undevelopable, I guess, to a point. Um and then the second condition I want to put on it is, prior to going to county commission, that they have agreeance with all six owners in there. So that uh before the county commission gets it for approval. And uh this recommendation's based on the following findings, the proposed subdivision amendment conforms with the West Central General Plan. And with the recommended conditions, the proposed subdivision amendment will follow the county land use code.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Thought we were gonna make comments.
You're right, go ahead, you are right.
Just clarify what you meant by the homeowners association stays in place in regards to. Now, I understand we can put.
Oh, so they, the homeowners obviously has got to stay in place, because they, it's a private road, and I'm glad you guys pointed that out, because I missed that when I reviewed it. So they've gotta, they've gotta put in HOA dues to maintain the road, but if, even with individual ownership. From what Steve told me, they can't go in and build a shop or something like that on it, I I wanna see them be able to do that, so they might have to amend their HOA covenants. So they can do that. Yes, but they gotta do that prior to, you know, bring it to the county commission, so that that open space easement can stay. In place, Steve, you follow me? Okay, sorry.
Any other discussion? Alright, now I'll ask for a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, start down here. So I'm new at this, so just, I agree, disagree is out here. Yep. Yeah, start it. You want, you want me to start somewhere else? Jed, would you do that? Help me out. Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards.
Hi.
Commissioner Andriotti. Commissioner Neville.
Hi.
Chair Verzai as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, a lot of good discussion, thanks for your participation, appreciate it, you may not have heard everything you wanted to. Um but it it was, it was good to see public come out and be concerned, and you probably convinced your way right into what you wanted. There you go. There you go, hey, thank you, next item on. Two point two LVM zero four two 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 one, request for recommendation of final approval of Mountain View Land and Livestock. Division consisting of twenty-one lots, Tammy.
So I'll give you kind of a brief overview of this project a little bit, it's been several months since this came before you back in last year. This is a proposed twenty-one lot subdivision in the A two zone. It is a lot averaged subdivision, so you're going to see some lot sizes and widths smaller than the zone minimum, and some that are larger. And to kind of orient our newer commissioners with a lot average subdivision, as long as the average of all of the lots in that subdivision meet the minimum for the zone. Um they are meeting the land use code for that, okay? Uh one of the concerns that came up in preliminary approval was the fact that seventy-five hundred west is a terminal dead end road. We've already got probably about thirty, you more than maybe thirty residences located on this road south of the railroad. And so, as you can see right here, this is where seventy-five hundred west ends. So the concern was the ability for residents to make a quick exit, or for emergency vehicles to come and go quickly. And be able to access this area, so a proposal was brought up, and what you see on your map, parcels highlighted in red, that's phase one. What you see highlighted in blue are future phases for this subdivision, and I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. This red here, and I do have a document that was submitted by the applicant, but I feel like this shows it a little bit better relative to what they're proposing. That red is their proposed emergency egress road. Now, one of the conditions of preliminary approval was that they put together a development agreement to ensure maintenance of this road, that it's installed to the specifications of the fire district. Um and then it's maintained properly so that it can be accessed in emergency situations at any time during the year. So to go back to. Some conditions of preliminary approval, these are in your staff report. Um prior to coming before you again, uh West Warren needed to issue a will serve letter, which they have done. I believe that's an exhibit in your staff report. As are as the second condition, which is the development agreement, that is in process right now, we have a draft right now. That planning and the attorney's office and the developer are looking at, want to make sure we've got the language specific and. For what we're looking for here. Well, the third condition was an updated feasibility letter, this was the original letter that you saw. It came before you for preliminary approval, was submitted, and as you can see, lot twenty required some additional work to make any type of recommendation for a septic system. There is one dated August nineteenth, and as you can see, lot twenty has since had that additional work completed, and they have received this feasibility for septic. Uh this will be. The outline of what you're looking at here. And staff would recommend approval of. And staff would recommend approval of Mountain View subdivision, Phase One. We would recommend final approval based upon the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. Give me questions at this time.
Chair, I have one question. Now, when sewer becomes available in this area, is there a requirement that they change to the sewer? Or would it stay as septic?
It's septic. There is no requirement at this time. Now Charlie may have, where he's a little more involved in that sewer study and perhaps Director Grover, they may have some, um, comments pursuant to getting everyone tied in, but at this time with this subdivision. Is that a condition that we'd be able to make that when sewer is available that they require to?
My concern of that is, is if these people are gonna go pay ten and fifteen thousand dollars to have this system put in, twenty-five thousand, you know, and, and if something happens in the next five or ten years, I mean, those systems. I, I hate to, well, for one, how we put that on there is, is a common, you know, the restrictive. Now, sometimes the, that sewer district will put something on there, if the sewer line gets within three hundred feet, you have to hook up, but it's hard to enforce that. Um, I wouldn't wanna put that on.
Well, I'd say within a timeframe, like once the septic takes down, we retire the septic tape and then go.
Yeah, I think that's, most people do that, but.
Okay.
Give us, give us your name and address.
John Price, uh, six forty-six South Manhattan West. So, we are actually working with Little Mountain Service right now. And we are the backend of our properties in the district, the twins not, so we're amending that as we speak. So we're, we're gonna go through with approval, but we're actually installing pressurized sewer into this, into the subdivision right now. With anticipation that everything will be through by the time people start building buildings.
But you need this approved with the plan.
People, because of interest rates and everything, people are nervous. We're letting them know that we'll have everything installed and they get to decide how they wanna. You know, but yeah, well, we're hoping to have sewer, and but there's no guarantee, that could take a lot longer than what people want. We are gonna install, uh, a line.
When it's available.
With this, as everything's like it right now.
In the subdivision, so.
So it'll be ready to, they'll be ready to put into it. Alright.
Would they be required to use that sewer if it's available rather than the septic?
That'll be up to Little Mountain.
The district.
So if, if we get all that done in time, and we're working with another development flagship. A lot has changed since we've, uh, you guys, we've been a part of a lot of these meetings, right? A lot has changed since we first presented this to you. Sewer being one of those, and we've got, uh, Little Mountain's permission with the route and everything that wants to go. And how to go about it, and we're working with Flagship, uh, as well, what they're doing. And, uh, so we, depending on how fast it goes through, that will be an option. We will be laying a line in. Um, for that kind of preparation, anticipating that, that we'll be ready.
So, just one question, curiosity. So is this a line that's gonna go through and then go on the other side of seventy-five hundred? Is that, this, this is kind of a trunk, so to speak, trunk line?
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? I'll ask for a motion.
Commissioner Neville, do you wanna make the first motion? Chair, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, we recommend, uh, approval of Mountain View, subdivisions, a lot average subdivision consisting of twenty-one lots located at approximately nineteen hundred south, seventy-five hundred west. This recommendation is subject to all review agency requirements and the following conditions. Um, this condition, I just wanna amend a little bit just for uniformity that, uh, prior, or that with this subdivision approval, going to County Commission, that they approve the development agreement at the same time, which, uh, will secure the secondary egress. Um, prior to the plat being recorded, all required improvements shall either be installed or escrowed for, or a combination of both. Prior to receiving final approval from County Commission, um, that the culinary water provider and secondary provider approve the project unconditionally or sign the subdivision plan. This recommendation's based on the following findings. The proposed subdivision conforms with the West Weaver General Plan. The proposed subdivision complies with applicable county ordinances.
Thank you. I have a motion, I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
I'll second, I'm motion.
Have a motion and a second. Do a roll call on this one, I guess we do. Right, okay. Commissioner Neville?
Casey Neville. I'm just stating my name, right?
No, yeah, yeah, your name.
I'll get this one these days.
Yay. Commissioner Andriotti. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Clontz.
Aye.
Commissioner Wickern. Commissioner Uncle Jed. Chair Verzai as well, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda. So, public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Anybody wanna get up and speak? I'm impressed that people stayed through the second item, so thank you for that. It's fun process. Oh, okay, good, good, alright. Next item, remarks from Planning Commissioner. Everybody have anything they'd like to share? Don't everybody talk up at once. Alright, next item, Director Grover. Okay, Charlie, I hope your, uh, your voice is ready. Anything from Legal? Alright. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn we shall to, uh, Western Weber General Plan Review. Thank you. Oh, and I, I didn't give it to you, Wayne, I'm sorry.
You can't hide in the back, bro. With that in it? I did get this.
Oh, you did?
You guys gotta approve the plan. I'll, I'll show you. This is, that's my protest. Showing protest that the plan's done.
Yes.
It'll, it'll happen. I'm gonna come ball as soon as this is done. Yeah, but to get a copy of the utilities and services. Sitting in front of you?
No. This is my stuff from last time.
Screw them around, bring it over to the shoulders if you need to. I've got a couple extra. Remind me your name again. What was your last name again?
The rest of the world says Neville, but my family's registered.
There you go, hey.
Okay. Well, let's get the show on the road, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, let's go ahead, Charlie.
This conversation can be as short as, or as long as you guys want. This is all we're covering. Now, we, we can go back and revisit whatever you want, pull up all the other elements, but. Utilities. The utilities and services section is the one that is still incomplete. And, um, even now, I told you guys in our last meeting, I would have a complete utilities and services, and I wanted to have a meeting with the utility entities together before we even got to this point. It just hasn't happened yet, it hasn't materialized. So, what I wanted to do, well, let me tell you what got me caught up. First off, what got me caught up is, is, um, the new state law from this last legislative session. I thought, just by my first glance over, that we were pretty much arguing compliance with it, and we're not. Um, there's actually quite a bit that is going into water requirements and tying water and land uses together in our general plan. Um, for example, we need to know how much water is required or is demanded by various different types of land uses. Now, getting the, uh, residential equivalent, the, the ERU, the equivalent residential unit. Um, that's actually not very hard to do, and most water agencies know exactly what ERU is. But, once again, it comes down to commercial, uh, industrial, hydroelectric, mining, uh, the outlying industrial, like some of the projects that we were talking about, and still will be talking about. It'd take a ton of water to do out in the, uh, industrial area. Those are still unknowns, they're gonna be relatively weak to the area. Um, so that's problem number one. Problem number two, we've got, we different districts that we're working, four different districts that we're working with as far as water goes. And that's not, then that's culinary districts, not to mention working with private irrigation companies, uh, to kind of figure out how exactly their water translates. And, uh, the state wants to do this in, in terms of gallons per capita per day. That's how they want this calculated. So, state has also been appropriated with this last legislative session with a bit of money to help the counties get through this. And it's not required to be done until twenty twenty-six. I just thought it'd be nice to bite it off and do it now. We might get half, uh, we might have to stop that halfway. And, uh, because the state has, is not set up yet to actually walk us all through this. So, I'm trying to get a, um, uh, they do a, what's it called? It's like a guided stakeholder meeting, where they get all the different stakeholders together, planning commission, um, all the different utility entities, water entities, and come up with the needs-based analysis of demand. Um, they think that you could probably punch out a, a compliant draft of a, of a, um, water plan, uh, after doing two or three of these little, uh, what are they called? Workshops.
So. But, but by stopping, that's not stopping the general plan from going ahead. We'll just stop where, what we have information for, and then we'll open it again when we have more.
That's exactly right. So I think the best thing for us to do is to go to maybe the seventy percent complete on the utilities and services, which, well, it's probably closer to ninety percent complete, seventy percent in terms of what is required for water. Um, and then spend some time over the next year or two, working with the state to, to really figure out how they want us to narrow this down. Um, it's nice that they're asking the locals to think about water, but it, water's such a, uh, important commodity, that it'd just be nice if the state said, this is what you're gonna do with water, this is how much it takes to do these things, and we're gonna standardize everything. But, they're, they're kinda saying, well, we'll let the locals control and then figure out whether or not they know what they're doing. Yeah, and I think so too. Okay, so on, um, H seventy-seven, so just to project, project conditions, flip the page over to seventy-eight. So I started with this table, as you can see here, to try and break things out the best that I could. Um, we've got some data from some, um, agencies. Right now, most agencies are pretty on board with the idea that one equivalent residential unit that's indoor water is about two hundred fifty-six gallons per day, meaning eight, about eighty-three gallons per person per day. Okay? Um, residential turf area, if you're gonna water an acre of land, we're talking about three thousand five hundred and seventy-one gallons. Which equals, equals about eleven hundred fifty-two gallons. And you know what? I might have missed a multiplier in that. I'm gonna redo that math, but.
I think you're right, because you're talking, you're dividing it by three essentially, each ERU connections, three.
That's right, so you're right. Right, the duty is, is four acre feet per acre, is that what you, so this is, this is a division for acre feet per acre.
Oh, I see, well, you're, you're inside use of point four five acre feet, which leaves point five five acre feet.
So the, so the point five five acre feet only covers eight thousand square feet of turf, right? And so. Okay, yeah, so we're, we're probably not too far off then. Six, so that'd be more like, uh, fifty.
Per capita, that's right.
So, it's just, it's a unit conversion, uh, and, and I think it's probably about half what you see here. I'll have to do it again. So I'll just break it down, uh, you can see residential turf area, one acre, I'll do residential turf area, ten thousand square feet, residential turf area, um, three thousand square feet or five thousand, I'll just figure out this. So you, you can just see what the, uh, essentially drawdown, no pun intended, is, uh, as, as you get smaller lot sizes on single family. And then also the benefit of going to stacked or multifamily, a lot more building, less area to irrigate, um, sort of thing. So you, you can see what that takes in terms of gallons per person per day. Once we get into commercial, general retail, uh, restaurant, office and others, I mean, that's a little bit harder. Uh, but not terrible. Um, institutional, that's, I mean, it's a challenging one, industrial is a very challenging one. And then agriculture's not hard. Um, that's, uh, four acre feet per acre, which we could just do the conversion to gallons per day. And it's average gallons per day, obviously we're not irrigating in the winter time, so. In the summertime, I mean, it's almost double what they would otherwise do in the winter time, which is nothing so.
I don't think it's a day.
I don't, I don't think that's a day.
On the agriculture.
So, they're, they're looking to do, oh, what they, what they wanna see is they wanna see gallons per capita per day required, and this is average over the course of a year. So, when you're looking at irrigated agriculture, the state duty, the required duty of irrigated agriculture is four acre feet per year. So if you take four acre feet per year, so four.
Yeah, cause that, that was, you know, yeah.
Okay. Oh yeah, did I say per day?
Yeah.
A lot more water.
We were going with the per day.
Sorry, divided by 365. Yeah.
There we go.
And then converted to gallons. And then divided by the number of people per household. And that's how you get to the, the final column there. Okay. Assumptions, that's just where I'm gonna have the assumptions that went into creating that table. We're making this up as we go. I can't find a table that does this.
Just a question. Back up on multifamily, two to 10, 11 plus, that's not really gonna change much when you're talking, your inside use. No, it's just the landscaping. That's right.
That's, that's right. So yeah, when you look at the multifamily and the 11 plus units, I'll probably strike those ones out and just list. So residential unit indoor is the top one. And then underneath that is what it's gonna take to irrigate your yard essentially. And then there'll be that plus that equals that column. Okay. And the same sort of thing with commercial institutional, I do have those numbers for outdoor uses from Weber Basin. And so we'll see outside and inside, and then we'll just add the two together to get a total for each type. Now, all that data is gonna be based on what we're doing today, what we're using today. If we have these, if we put into place good water policy, it says zero scape, or we wanna conserve waters as much as we possibly can, whatever it is, these numbers will change in time. So what the state has done, in fact, let's see.
We gotta look at that 20% requirement of commercial.
Let's.
Page, it's there.
Well, that's, that's consumption. That's right now our zoning order requires that 20% of the turf of the area of landscape.
It does require at least 20% landscape, but so that doesn't mean it needs to be turd. That's the easy answer. So maybe what we say is, you know, less than X amount turf. A lot of jurisdictions say no less than a lot.
Well, so, so what are we gonna say that we're gonna reduce the 20% by another 30%? The 20% by another 70%?
The 20% landscaping?
Yeah.
That's per capita use, not the landscaping use.
Oh, okay. And we're not necessarily talking about, when we're talking about landscaping, we're not talking about live plant material.
Well, I agree.
No, right.
I still think we need to look at reducing that. Commercial 20%, a field of rocks. I mean, what's the benefit of it?
That's true.
You know, if there's not grass or something that someone can utilize, that's something.
Well, if we cut back on landscaping, what do they do with that land? What do they do with that extra space?
Save water.
Paved it? Well, I mean, save water. So again, landscaping can be rocks, it could be, it could be wood chips. So it doesn't have to be something that has to be irrigated.
If you went 10% instead, then that gives them that much, you know, that you figure, you know, the business could fit on a smaller post.
Okay.
When I look at, I'm looking at it from you guys' point right there with the smaller lot you have. And I think you've got a killer idea, but if we come in now and say you have to have 20% landscaping on there, then you're only an acre. Your buildable footprint, your parking, all that. Just like to allow.
Okay, okay.
Just that, that's, I just don't like that 20%.
Everything.
I, I, I'm good with things, but I, I think that's the worst we go. You've gotta have something.
Then on culinary, secondary.
Sorry, I've got all the pages turned.
No, you're good.
Here's a, here's a thought though, where we're doing more of these areas. Well, if our buildings are long and narrow and right next to each other, we're doing walkable districts. And we're trying to keep the houses closer together, then 10% might get more, more accessible. I don't know, is 10% too much?
But so.
Depending on how it lays out.
Yeah, we could do, we could do forgiveness, for example, if it's laid out a certain way.
The, the street front and the back or something, I'm not sure.
So looking at street frontage and looking at that street as the public domain, that's the public space, right? We want some street trees if we can. We want some street vegetation, having planters that are irrigated or that are watered every, you know, by somebody. It's job creation and it's attraction, right? So you've got that in the public realm. Then you've got the building front, right? You've got a commercial on the bottom or retail on the bottom, and you've got maybe residential above, maybe office space, black space, whatever it is. In the back, that's parking, there's a lot of parking. If we were to say 20% of your parcel needs to be landscaping, that's gonna be a problem for those particular types of uses. Your landscaping is in the public realm at that moment. But not to say it should always be. You know, the, maybe the 20% offset, maybe what that is, is maybe it's an investment in the local park history.
I like it.
Providing for some open space.
Cause then it's usable space.
Yeah.
Someone gets the benefit of it.
That'd be cautious about hardscape. So I'll chat with the engineers and see if they have some big concerns.
Get some water runoff and issues there.
Yeah, west, we've got a lot of concerns about drainage because of how flat we are. So trying to figure out exactly how to manage that.
But you both have got water table issues, so you really can't.
Right. So where's the water gonna go anyway? Everybody has to build up 10 feet before we do anything and then we can store it somewhere, right? Is that?
Make channels.
Two and a half.
And somebody out there is already working on that, including providing wetland bank and all that kind of stuff. So let me put some thought into that. 20% land.
Or down to 10%.
Requirement.
I love the landscaping and I like trees and parking lots. It gets the change. I just don't want grass or grass to stay, or landscaping to landscape safe, but it's not productive.
More parking for your cars is better.
What? Probably the trees tear up.
Yeah, no, more parking. So the residential units, we're definitely gonna wanna require parking. For the commercial units, the market generally dictates how much parking is needed. You're, you're not gonna get your, your loan underwritten unless you've got a certain amount of parking stalls. It's just.
So what was interesting, we're doing a restaurant in Layton. The, the franchise had analyzed how many parking spaces we needed. And we went to them and the city would not approve that many parking spaces. We're like, we have got data to say we need this many parking spaces.
Interesting. It's usually the opposite.
They wanted less. So the franchise wanted more. The city wanted less. And we, we could not make heads or tails of that. We, we came to an agreement and agreement. But I, I know people don't wanna have a lot of hardscape, but cars on the street are not safe.
Right.
So I would err on the side of more parking so that we don't have people crazy stuff on the street.
Yeah, I agree. So my suggestion would be that we I'm not gonna say get rid of, but we sidestep for some of these village areas. We sidestep our minimum parking requirement for the commercial areas and just focus on the residential. And you need to focus on the residential. Commercial will provide for itself, the residential, they're gonna park wherever they can find a parking spot. And so if you make sure that there is one devoted to them on their property or on site or whatever, they're not gonna be parking in the next door neighbors, a commercial parking lot. They're riding the road, clogging that up or on the road.
And probably two and a half parking spaces per spot or per unit. Because they always say, oh, there's one spot.
We have to increase. Actually, that's not a terrible idea. Two and a half, the 0.5 is either for that person or it's for guests.
Yeah. Lots of two parts. Lots of two and a half of those.
I do like.
And that has been a problem. I asked if the street is just full. Actually, I saw an accident because someone couldn't see because people are parked too close to, to get in and out on all.
Now. Talking about street parking, in these village areas, we're, we're gonna be promoting street. We want to see, but we're talking about 25th Street, 45 degree angle street. Now, that's not on 12th Street, maybe on 4700 if we're lucky, when we're working with UDOT. But we're talking about just the internal village.
But 45, we're not talking parallel.
Not, not parallel. And it'd be nice if we can get people into this idea of 45 back end because that's so much safer. But the way around here seems to know how to do it. Everybody flips around from the opposite side, just in the wrong way. Okay, that's good. I've got that on the list. So let me take a couple spots back before we do it. I wanna go over just what you guys know the current status is on infrastructure and, and your respective areas. And, and just the points that you would like the current conditions to hit. I'll continue to do the research and, and flesh some of this out on my own, but I wanna pick your brains first. And then after that, I wanna go through to the goals, policies and implementation strategies that we want. And let's just start making bullet points so I can just get this filled out and more completely back to you guys in the next meeting.
Okay, I'll follow up on this topic.
Yep, all on, on just this topic. Yeah. Now, if you guys wanna deviate and talk about other things, I'm, I'm having to do so. I just wanna make sure we get through this today. Okay. Um, all right. So on page 78, sorry, the, the header that says, the effect of patterns of development on water demand and water infrastructure. But I've started doing, I went through the state statute and I just put bullet points, the, the statute, bullet points in this document here. So that we know exactly what we have to hit when it comes to water planning. And this is one of them. The effect of patterns of development on water demand and water infrastructure. I think that's just gonna be a standard statement. We know as we develop that we're gonna be consuming farmland, which will be taking irrigation land. It'll be taking four acre feet per acre and turning it into residential, which is then gonna be your equivalent residential unit and plus your turf grass or whatever, you know, whatever you're gonna be irrigating outside.
My only concern with that is there's a lot of that gravel that isn't there.
That's true.
Probably more out there in some of these areas that aren't irrigated. When we look at this in the whole Western Weaver area that don't have water. So if we take that number across the board.
So we wouldn't take that number in play to all acreage. What we would do is we would look at what has been essentially perfected up to this point in terms of water rights. And then we would look at Weber Basin, that's given me a lot of data already on what they are supplying. So this is the amount of acre feet that comes out to the Western Weaver area or goes up, you went to Highlands. And then we would divide that by the acreage that is being used as agriculture.
Did you say Weaver Basin would supply the water if they didn't have it?
Say it again.
Did you say Weaver Basin would supply the water and people didn't have it?
Not yet, but I, Weaver Basin is planning on being the wholesaler for essentially all the water in the area. Yeah.
Not supplied.
Yep. That's the intention of Weaver Basin. And there's a big, long-term plan that I'm gonna hit on with you guys because I wasn't aware that that existed. But first off, I wanted to go over, so under the effects of patterns of development on water demand and water infrastructure, we know that the state has a plan. So what are they right here? They want by 2065, there will be somewhere between 15,700 acre feet and 26,100 acre feet of water converted from agricultural water into municipal and industrial water. And that's for the Weber River drainage. It's not just Western Weaver area. It's not just the Highlands area. It's just across the board. But that's where the majority of the ag is. So it's, it's pretty easy to, to look at that one. So when you're looking at that, we've got the table below here, so 50,700. So they give you just a range between 15,700 and 26,100. Okay. Again, my pages out of order.
You're beating the crap out of them over there.
Excited, I am. Just passionate.
Excited because you're coming to the end or what?
Yes. Okay. Let's, let's jump over to page 81. I can't guarantee that all this information is gonna be, continue to be presented exactly this way. But as we identify themes and flesh things out, uh, reorganize in a way that makes sense. So culinary water, the first paragraph was already there. You guys have already seen that. Second paragraph I've revised. So I'm just gonna review it with you. Weber County currently plays no direct role in supplying culinary water in Western Weaver. Private water service providers generally work together to coordinate their efforts. Sorry, private and public, excuse me. Generally work together to coordinate their efforts and share information, but they, but they plan to remain independent for this foreseeable future, whether through development of additional private sources, private or public, excuse me. Or expansion of community water systems. The area's projected growth will require additional culinary water and new water infrastructure. And here's a brand new paragraph. Surface water can be treated for culinary uses, but the construction operation of water treatment facilities are expensive. As the area's available water resources become scarce over time, the state's plan is to tap water resources from other drainage bases. The Bear River Development Act of 1991, the infrastructure of which at the time was projected to be needed to serve the planning area by 2015, is a planned surface water development source for the, for the area. Infrastructure is now projected to be another 30 years out. The project will bring approximately 50,000 acre feet of new water availability to the Weber Basin Water Conservancy District. And that's not 50,000 to this area. I can't remember what proportion of that we're getting, but we're sharing that with Davis and part of Salt Lake County as well. And that's Weber Basin and Jordan River Conservancy District having some kind of a cooperative agreement there. There is a culinary, a surface water culinary treatment plant that is planned to be built on 2550 and South and 2700 West. That's already owned by Weber Basin. That's how serious they are about this. So bringing water from the Bear River is gonna be an interesting task, right? They still don't know if they're going to detain in cash or if they're gonna detain somewhere in box cellar. It's gonna be one of those two areas, but they do know that we need to figure out where the alignment is going to be through Weber County to get to the site where they're gonna be treating it on 2550. And then from there further south, we raised a conservancy district, already has the alignment from 2550 going south. And they're just following the power line. So I figured we just do the same, follow the power line going north. Just the transmission facilities is there. We don't own, or the, excuse me, the power company, power company doesn't own all of that. But they have easements across it. And so we have to work with individual landowners to operate either adjacent to or within those easements. But better planet now, we're talking about a 10-foot diameter pipe. It's a lot of water. And a 10-foot diameter pipe requires about a hundred foot wide easement or, or core. And I can't remember how many billions of dollars it's gonna cost, but plan on spending that in taxes. What's that?
You county has it.
Yeah, it's a, it's actually in my back pocket and my other pants. It's, it's gonna be a bit of an effort, but we, as you can see from the projections, we've been able to save off needing it so far through water conservation principles and through technological advancements. But they're still showing it's gonna be needed. We just don't have enough in the drainage basin. And this last year, I mean, fortunately it was raining a little bit, but having the Weber River drainage basin at 12% of normal is just not. They're not projecting that we're gonna see a whole lot of normal over the next. But that does tie right into, I think, an idea that we discussed before. And it, and I think we did write it down in the resource management plan as a goal, that we need to be looking at other drainage areas to tap. The other challenge with tapping the Bear River project is that's one of the rivers that feed the lake. And so now we've got competing interests. Do we keep the lake full or do we drink water? And how can we somehow do both? My opinion, probably are gonna be needing to go outside of just the great Salt Lake basin in general to figure out how to solve our longer term water needs. Either that or stop having these. I don't know any other solution. And stop being economically successful. Okay. But just so you know, that is the point that the state has. The state's plan is also, I know I wrote it down, to reduce water consumption. Here we are, page 79. All right, I've got this sentence under the wrong header here. Just the black text there. Utah Division of Water Resources has set a goal to reduce the Weber River Basin's per capita water consumption by 20% by 2030. It's ambitious. They further desire to reduce it to, sorry, by 30%. So from 20 to 30% by the year 2065. So between 2030 and 2065, they wanna reduce another 10%. Now that's per capita. So that's not, we're actually reducing how much water we're using. We're still gonna be using a lot more water. It's just less per person. All right. So let's go back to. Alright, so let's go back to. Page seventy eight. What's that? Okay, so now we're at the bottom of page seventy eight, methods of reducing water demand and consumption. So I just want to do just a quick brainstorming idea, idea generation with you guys. So the first bullet point is reducing demand and per capita consumption for future development. And then the second one is reducing it for existing development. So let's start with future development. Let's just bullet point really quickly. Some ideas that you guys have.
What what's the plan Charlie? Question before we kind of start that discussion. What's the plan for the wastewater? For the sewer water? Is that going to be reclaimed? Is it going to go and feed the lake? Is that going to be the replacement water for the lake? You know, just pass through the system, so to speak, or what?
Sewer study is still out, but there is a sewer study that's being done. The question about reuse is a great question. A lot of folks who know that water is basically the oil of the of the West. Know that reuse of that sell the water twice. But then we never fill the lake up, right? So it all depends, this this whole idea of saving the lake, I mean, it's not a new idea, but it has gained political traction. Within the last year or two only. And so I don't know how. Much more steam that's going to garner or or create, but. It's something's got to happen, right? Otherwise, we're all breathing heavy metals every time the wind blows.
So the reason I brought that up is just because. There's only, there's going to be a, there's going to be a place where consumption is not going to be able to be conserved on. Right, you know, they're going to hit a sweet, a sweet spot. And so that's why, you know, every drop's going to be important. Not that it's not now, but it's going to become more important.
So reuse is a big part of that conversation, yes. If we're bringing water in from another drainage basin, even better. Because then we could reuse it as much as we can, goes in the groundwater or surface water or whatever it is, we find its way to the lake, which would be phenomenal. Get to that one. Out here, it's not as hard to do reuse as it is in the Ogden Valley. Ogden was affected by. Contaminated water body, which is what the reservoir is considered, and so you can't. Directly, what's it called, off. Drain, drain your sewer system or whatever it's called into that the groundwater there or. A drainage facility out there. Out here, it's a little bit different as long as it's clean enough. I'll get you more data on that as soon as that water study is, or excuse me, as soon as the sewer study is done. Okay, let's talk about future development, so reduction of water consumption for future development. We talked about zero skating, right? We've talked about. Less. Than twenty percent. Landscaping for commercial, yeah, what else?
On this graph here, when it says irrigation, is that all irrigation, commercial residential included? Is that number included in farmer irrigation? Or is that where is the public supply? What is is where we?
The the public supply is what's coming out of the tap. Now, those who irrigate their yards have water, which a lot of people do. Yeah, that's still the public supply.
Secondary water use.
Secondary irrigation. No, good question.
I just looking at this chart and yeah, that's where we want to attach things. If we can save thirty percent of that, we save like twenty percent overall.
Yep, exactly.
But very small portion of that are in yards, so.
Right, well, in. As as some of that cultural land looking to residential, that's where we can really try and tackle some of that water use. Holding as much as we can for viable agricultural operations, but I still think we could probably cut down on that seventy two percent quite a bit. That's just going to happen as the market.
I don't think it's a small amount as you think it is for irrigation of yards. Because you flipped, you flipped irrigation water. That used to be used for orchards, it used to be, you know, farm, all kinds of farm ground. You flipped that now and you're using that as irrigation secondary water. It's going right back to where it came from. So, yeah, there's probably some in there, I agree, but I don't think.
Eight percent of the total, did that sound right, was the the last study, about eight percent was yard irrigation?
Yeah, but but the the reason I say that is because the farmers aren't getting more water than they historically have always gotten. Right, so that's.
Right, well, and that is, that's actually, it's a really good point because the state still has mandatory minimum water. It's the same whether you're 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 irrigating, flood irrigating for an orchard or for. Crop as it is to irrigate your turf grass. So when you go to Weaver Basin, let's just say you're you're digging a well. Really easy way to explain this. You're digging a well, you go to Weaver Basin to get an exchange contract with them. The 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 lowest amount of water that you can buy from them is one acre foot. So you buy one acre foot contract, that gives you the point four five acre feet that Brendan was talking about. For internal use and that poor fuck, that point four five acre feet, that translates to two hundred fifty six gallons. Per day or eighty three gallons per person. So we already have that nailed down. Okay, the other point five five acre feet that Weaver Basin required you to buy out of that one acre foot. Is for eight thousand square feet of essentially turf grass. And so if you got an acre of land and you're irrigating all of that acre except for where your home and your driveway is cut out. You're using way more water than the contract that you have with Weaver Basin. So Weaver Basin would then allow you to start buying in quarter acre foot acres. So until you, I mean, you have to have the the correct amount. The solution to a lot of this is on the horizon, but it's not required to be implemented until twenty thirty. Which is mirroring every type of water, right? So someone's got to come into my backyard, dig up where my main comes in from high water and put a meter on that. Great, hopefully a radio meter, so nobody has to go in my backyard and check my meter every year. And then just hitting me hard. Yeah, and and keeping that tiered structure very high. I can say this tiered structure is very high. I've noticed. I have to keep my kid from taking long showers.
It's a lot less than the water bill. So then at that point, you're like, oh, I will do the efficient water plan because.
It's it's too expensive to irrigate your.
But that's the ways out, so we've got to figure out what efficient water plants we put in our general plan. Yeah, and so the turf grass, I think park strips are a huge water waste. That's what we've we've noticed, but now people are carrying them up to put. Rocks and such in, but what if we just bring the sidewalk to the street and change our.
So.
Like our our profile or why do you have sidewalk areas?
So let's talk a little bit about that. Having that park strip or whatever it's called. It gives a buffer between the travel lanes and the pedestrians, first off. It gives a sense of comfort for those pedestrians to be in that realm as opposed to having them right up next to where the cars might be. And so there is a benefit to having that separation that goes beyond just a green space. A hundred percent agree that we can't hurt that. We shouldn't hurt that. In fact, we should create.
Because it's really hard to water just. We have a wider path, like, I mean, I see the barrier, but if some, if it's just. Oh, wider, if we're putting in wider sidewalk sections, I think we have a barrier where we also have some utility.
Yeah.
To that or.
Yeah, I, so I agree with you. The cross sections that we're looking at adopting has a wider path on at least one side of the.
But is there also a park strip in addition to a wider path?
Still a park strip in addition. So if you keep the, if you keep the street on the center of the street on the center line, which I don't think we need to do. But we've got some people that really like the idea of having the center of the street on the center line, whatever reason. On one side of the road, you're just going to have a smaller park strip and a wider trail, right? On the other side of the road, you're going to have a wider park strip and a smaller sidewalk. So minute you have to have pedestrian facilities, you should have pedestrian facilities on both sides. Still have park strips in there. The park strips are going to do a couple of things. They're going to provide us with low impact development. So the water that flows off the the hard surface goes into those swales. Unless you've got a water table issue, then it's going to go none there, right? So that's where we might have to use a high that curb, new high that curb. Figure out where you're going to send this. At some point, right, hopefully to a. A river.
Right, well, and for crashing out water, that's right, this will idea maybe was swell. For out in the country, but probably not the best use of our waters. Maybe somebody don't want to use as much.
You mean irrigating as well or watering as well?
Well, no, the water, we capture that water by having a hardscape, then we can direct it to where we need the water instead of just having this muddy. Muddy.
So there there are some rules about capturing, yeah, capturing water. So the water that comes out of the clouds are is water to the state. And if you, if it's not allowed to go to wherever it would naturally flow, it affects people downstream and their access to it. That's essentially.
Well, but I'm just talking about curb and gutter versus the. The ditch idea. Curb and gutter will direct to the water a little bit more visually, especially where we have a high water table.
Yeah, as long as we understand, you can't necessarily use the water that's in that, in the pipe.
Well, it goes into the sewer system, so.
Storm sewer, which then goes to the river, which then goes to like gets sucked out by the farmer.
And then goes to the lake, which to me is a water stain. It goes to the lake, that's a good use of it and it's better than sitting in a muddy ditch.
Yes, agree, hundred percent agree. So we'll have two cross sections. I just want to say, we'll have two cross sections. One will be the the swale and under the swale will still have a pipe. And essentially. Yeah, so you'll still have compaction everything, the water.
For that infiltration, someone cleaning some of that water before it hits them. That's why that swell idea. The requirement now. Why, why they push it as a requirement?
Yeah, and onsite detention and they, they got, they were really ambitious when they made it a requirement. And then they changed it a little bit later to be a little less ambitious. At first it was all water has to be kept on site, essentially. There's got to be a very good reason why. It it it's not on site. So either it's kept on site to evaporate or per with the grab. Or the engineer can give you an exception to the rule. Now there's a little bit more flexibility for the engineers to say, alright, you've got a stormwater detention facility over here. That is going to perk or is going to hold until it goes somewhere else. There's a lot more flexibility. It's just.
We're looking more from the detention standpoint than the retention thing. You know, the infiltration's going now or away. They're just making sure we're we're maintaining for those hundred gear vents for flood control more or less.
Yeah, yes, and then the filtration of.
If, if available, yeah.
I was in a, I believe it was a Zoom meeting on a Monday meeting and the commissioners were discussing, in fact, Brad might have been on there. They were discussing about the stormwater and how they need to fix the infrastructure all the way from out here, all the way out to us. And get it all in alignment by the kind of kind of gets out to us, it's just screwing us up. Have they gone anywhere on that? Are they moving anywhere on that to get that all run down?
Yeah, so there's a stormwater master plan that's been created. It's just, it's not, it's not the best plan in the world. There's a lot of need for wanting. And so the same concern that that you brought up is one of the concerns that our engineers have. Thinking about, alright, how do we, how do we make sure we deal with this, especially in the light of such high groundwater? I mean, are we just going to be creating bogs or are we actually going to be able to drain land?
So many agencies have got to come together on that because, you know, you, when you look at North Ogden. And and their area and their development with water, they see, they can have twelve inch pipe and sustain it all. But by the time you get from North Ogden, Pleasant View, Far West, Planted, and you head out in the western part of the county. You're having to have four by eight box cones and stuff to handle that, that amount of water. And that's where. Several years ago, the county kind of pushed and brought all the agencies together and started working to that, but no. There's only one group that really still does that. That's Pleasant View, North Ogden.
So is there truth to that though, because some of the other infrastructures aren't in place, it's damaging ours?
Oh, yeah. If they don't retain that water, that's when you have those big, you have what happens, you know, in Yellowstone. It's going to wash it out, it's going to, you look at twenty seven, well, yeah, twenty seventeen, you know, we were having to cut roads out west and do things. Sheer volume problem. And that's even after they, they, you know, retained everything they could on the field, so it's.
I just, I I remembered the conversation and that there was some other counties that had already implemented some plans.
Kind of has a great stormwater agency that comes all together. And I think the county is working towards it, but it becomes a priority. Now we've hit a drought.
Yeah.
And we don't get nothing, so it's on a back burner and guess what? It's going to become number one as soon as we get one.
You're right.
So we've got a stormwater plan for both Western Weaver and Ogden Valley. Again, they're not the best plans, but it was, gave us enough data. To justify creating a stormwater utility.
I understand that one.
But creating that utility, we hit a block.
Yeah.
Right, because nobody wants to pay that utility bill. It's just a brand new utility bill. It's a municipal utility bill. And we're all saying we're part of the uncovert area, we don't have to pay for this sort of thing. Now, I can't say to the publics. I think there was concern at the time from the officials that it was just going to.
Which is crazy because every municipality in the county, if you lived in a city, you pay.
Yep, I totally understand.
No, go ahead. I'm going to leave this just a little bit. I'm going to go and give direction, so.
I'm on the park strip again, just because I find parks to be. I think they're beautiful when they're maintained.
Yes.
But eliminating that them entirely to me, I think is beneficial. And so I'm sure it's like a.
Where are you going to put your stone? Someday we're going to get.
Yeah, I mean, if we put more diagonal park, like if parking is next to that sidewalk, can we eliminate the park strip?
So where we're doing forty five degree angle parking, there wouldn't be a park strip.
And is there like in communities where there's. It doesn't like, I'm thinking of a typical residential community that doesn't have a lot of traffic and it has speed limit about twenty five miles per hour.
I'm not, I'm suggesting we don't even have.
Any.
Pedestrian facilities. And if it's, if it's a small residential road. My suggestion would be that it's. The asphalt's good enough, as long as it's. Well, so as long as it's not a, if it's a minor residential. If it's a major residential road, something that connects neighborhoods to neighborhoods or to black streets, those will definitely be sidewalks. So think about.
We're essentially going back to what we were doing in the nineties.
Sure, sure, except for now we'll have enough right of way to do something different. To put those trails.
So you have your narrow roads. Lower speed.
That's right.
Swells.
That's, that's the thought.
Essentially.
There still will be a swell though.
Uh, we got to catch the water somehow. So if 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 it's not a swell, then it would be high back. Curve with.
So everyone would have to walk on the streets to the neighbors.
So the idea is everybody. Yeah, I think about upper New Orleans.
Yeah, it it like kind of functions, but it's not a good idea.
And we can, we can always go a different direction. I I think, I think that we're thinking about different types of streets.
In the right places, danger.
So, right, that's, so minor residential streets that don't make strong connections. You're not going to have a ton of traffic on those anymore. Uh, now blind corners and stuff like that, we definitely have to address, but up like up in the New into Highlands. Byby would not be one of them. Even though Byby is built like that right now, right?
Byby, woodland, everything above woodland.
So, but a lot of those up there, they function great without the sidewalk.
For adults to walk around, yes, for children, no, that's the problem.
Well, Byby's not minor either, that.
Right, so Byby would be, even though it's residential, it is a residential connection to a, well. Collector, which would be Comby and Comby would also, that was a collector, right? So definitely need pedestrian facilities on on that. Eastwood. As well. So the idea, it's actually, you say it back in the nineties, it's more like eighteen nineties. Where the reason for the separation is the danger of vehicles, right? At the time, you could still have, you know, runaway wagons and stuff like that speeding through these these village areas or these town areas. But the fact that you had users, all users in the street. Kept things relatively regularly and slow. I've made jokes before, the best way to slow traffic down is put kids out there. I don't mean to turn kids into speed bumps, okay? That's not at all what I'm. I've made jokes before, the best way to slow traffic down is put kids out there. I don't mean to turn kids into speed bumps, okay, that's not at all what I'm.
Yeah, so. I can see moving the sidewalk to the edge of the street in those situations, that's what I'm saying, is I would never suggest eliminating the sidewalk. I'd have a narrow narrower street and then curve sidewalk, no park strip. That's safe enough, but there has to be.
Okay, what about a cul-de-sac? Would you wanna see that cul-de-sac?
I would, well, I can say that's how difficult that is, but I can't tell you how many people we have hauling into our cul-de-sac. Weird just things happening, well, they don't know it's a cul-de-sac.
Right, until they get to the very end.
And then they're hauling through the middle of a cul-de-sac.
Right.
And uh yeah, I I really think that sidewalk's important.
I I think I would rather see that, just a sidewalk without a park strip rather than just a road and you know sidewalk.
But I definitely think that eliminating the park strip in that situation is, would be safe. Eliminating the sidewalk altogether. Well, they, in the winter, they will, you lose the sidewalk on those kind of streets in the winter and that's.
The homeowner starts screaming because the city comes through, bury my sidewalk with them, so there's snowplow drivers. You know, then they make some of them go out and clear the sidewalks, like they just. So for liability issues, you have, they have to clear up some time aside there.
I'd rather not have a sidewalk for a few big snows of the year than to not have it entirely. I don't think that's.
One of the things about uh transportation planning is um, there's a lot of. Right, uh a lot of uh, how how many of us have driven to a destination, gotten to the destination and said, how did I get here? Right, like, when did I change lanes? I mean, we just kind of zone out at some point then. The easier it is, the safer a a a street system is, the higher capacity it's designed for. All of those things are leading into a negative phenomenon, which that negative phenomenon is the absentee driver, right, the person who's zoned out. Now, we're thinking, okay, how do we fix this problem? Well, let's let technology start fixing the problem, let's let the cars talk to each other and something like that. Flipping that idea into uh, and again, not on uh freeways, not on collector's streets. Not on arterial streets for sure, just in these small neighborhoods, flipping that idea and changing. The infrastructure type that goes into these residential areas will change the behavior of the person behind the wall. Um and I actually took our our staff over to a a road that I found myself driving down Ogden. Uh a little while ago, where I was driving down this road in Ogden and, you know, it was kind of a little bit checked out for just a second, but I did notice that I had someone kind of. I looked down at my my gauge and I was going a pretty uh slow pace. A drive with a white foot, I'm I'm not that type of person, why am I going slow? And I just started kind of looking around and realizing, okay, the road is narrow, there's a white stripe on this side, so my my area is uh. Is is much uh, i- is more defined. We've got street parking off to the side, somebody might open a door right into my lane. There might be a kid between these cars running out with a with a ball rolling out, and so as I started like bringing my subconscious thought back uh up to the forefront, I started realizing, okay. I'm going slow because of how the street is designed, and putting these streets on a road diet, where essentially you got, you got uh narrower lanes and travel. Without even a yellow lines, in in many cases on residential streets, or not even a yellow line on it, that by itself will uh. Trigger to the person who's behind the wheel, let off the gas, something else is happening. Now, in Ogden, there's another really, really, really good benefit to some of these old streets, Ogden, tree canopy doesn't too. Because we, we drove down that and then we drove down an equivalent street that had almost all the same things without the tree canopy, it just didn't feel quite the same. So anyway, a little bit of that phenomenon here, but I I get it, if we wanna look at sidewalks, let's let's make sure we keep sidewalks in there. I would like to see minor residential streets dropped from a sixty six foot to a fifty foot. I just gotta convince the engineers that that's a, well, one engineer, I think most are engineers are okay with that, but that's a comment.
I think the operating words, what you're looking for is small, as far as the amount of people and services.
That's right.
Quing level five acre suburbs, which there's a lot of owners out there that have bike.
That's right.
That's what they.
That's right, and primarily cul-de-sacs, uh I'm thinking, but in some cases we'll find uh loops that essentially don't take anybody anywhere. The only reason to get on one of those loops is if you live there. And it's gotta be designed in a way where as you're driving down a major residential or a minor collector's street. And you see the opportunity to turn onto one of these streets, it is clear to you that that street is narrower, therefore. Uh that's not a street that's gonna go anywhere versus the one that you're on that goes somewhere. Our engineers really like streets that kind of do, you know, this business where one street's this way and then. And then you hit a band and you gotta go that way, and you hit a band and you gotta go that way, because it keeps traffic really slow, right? The problem with that is you don't know which way you're supposed to go, whereas if you were to take those ninety degrees out and just kind of a little bit. Easier flowing, you know, uh radiuses on it, you keep one street, one street main. But as you see your streets that brand job from that main, whatever that main residential street is. That's where you see the smaller, yeah, the smaller thing where people are like, oh, that's. So possible way the city's gonna allow that street to go anywhere, because it's, you know, somewhat more narrow, even if it does move backwards, so.
So, so did you decide you're gonna keep sidewalks in?
I think so, I mean, well.
I just was worried about like that, what is it, a mile or a mile and a half, but if they're they're.
Yeah, so safe access to school and radiuses from school is is gonna be really important as well, yes.
So did we hop from water over to transportation? Right, but I just wanted to make sure that I was following. Well, I think we had a goal of getting through the utilities, so I wanna kind of keep track on utilities, and I and I wanted to bring up. One item kind of in a different direction, and this will affect a specific area of Western Weaver. And that's the heavy uh, the M-zone, the the industrial zone. So we were talking about a facility almost two years ago, I guess, that was, well, it was proposed to go through a million gallons of water a day. Now, how accurate that was, who knows, that's that's what we were told. Okay, that's where there's potential for a lot of savings or a lot of not having it at all. Just a lot of avoidance. So given the climate that we're in, given the situation we're in with the water, we all gotta drink. And the population's not gonna shrink, but we do need the jobs. But at the same time, there's gotta be a way, there's gotta be a process for large water users. Because what normally happens with those wa- large water, it it's used for cooling purposes, and it goes into the air, which that's fine, it's dry here, but. But that's what happens to most of them, it's it's all for cooling purposes, processed water. So having said that, if you have several. Facilities that go through that kind of quantity of water, and even if that's a monthly figure, even if that was exaggerated as a daily figure, that's a lot of water.
Yeah.
It takes a lot of residences to equal that amount of water, so what do we do there? Do we, do we put something in place where we're where we're very conscious about what kind of of business we're letting in? Is that part of our process of of our economic development? Um and then also there's waste that comes off of that as well. And and so then again, I go back to the same thing, and it's not necessarily dirty like sewer water, but it is not drinkable water, it's not potable. But it can be made into potable water relatively easily. So what are we gonna, you know, those are things where I think that that in that part of our of our general plan, the area that's going to be conducive to that. That kind of quantity use, you need to come up with some sort of a a plan to work with. As we grow that part of of the county.
So I've got one. So, one point, future development reduction, be more conscious and selective selective when pursuing huge water users. Uh when we're trying to core economic, okay, uh I like that, I think it's a really good idea, and then the other side of it was sewer reclaim.
Well, and and it's not necessarily sewer, but yeah, probably gets, it probably all goes through the sewer system in that case. Because you can't, you can't put processed water into the storm drain, but so it has to be processed through the sewer. When you have that kind of facilities hooked into that, into that particular sewer district, your sewer's gonna be less. Toxic, I guess I'd say, unless there's chemical or something that's dumped into it, of course, but but then there's other factors that. That determine what those, that what what's going to be allowed to be dumped in there into that sewer as well, you can't just dump gasoline in that sewer.
Right, right, well, even then, they've got oil uh water separators that, I mean, they've got a lot of ways to pull that stuff out. Cause you're right, the higher end uh uh water reclamation facilities. Uh produce drinkable water regardless of whether or not somebody put oil in it or not, you know, so they've got the the mechanisms built into.
All the parking lot at Pine View goes into Pine View and there's water, I guarantee you, that parking lot's going into that dam and we're drinking, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Just not in in, you know, in huge quantities, but still, water flows downhill, just think of it like a plumber. And payday's on Friday.
I was gonna say, flows downhill and. Sewer waters, uh secondary and or drinking water, would you rather just say secondary uses?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, um yeah, with little with little treatment, it could be used for secondary uses and with, you know, heavier treatment, it could be. Turned the claim for potable.
Okay, good, I like it. Okay, we're still on the subject of uh reducing future development uh water uses, any other ideas? It's a good idea, this, I mean, enough not to say, we need more, this is enough, but.
With that, just a question for me, when a corporation or business comes in, is that part of their proposal, is how much water usage they're gonna have?
Well, it 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 is to this extent, sorry, Charlie, I apologize. They'll go to the water district and they'll find out how much water is going to be available to them. So it might not be that something that's directed directly to the county, but it's it's information that they're seeking.
So they're gonna see exactly what can be available to them and say that's what.
Well, there's. They're they're gonna look for that before they even make a decision to come here.
Is there enough water available? So it's not necessarily they're gonna use the entire delta, the entire amount that's available, it's it's, they're gonna use what they need, but they're not gonna come if they.
And sure, they'll over project it, you know, for expansion.
They should, yeah, over projecting is is good for us, because then we've got a little bit in the slush fund. Um but the very big water users, yes, we know upfront how much water they're gonna be um using, and. They're coming to us saying, here's our fact sheet, tell us why you're, and you're the best option for us. Um so I just saw one the other day that had a very high amount of water, it was, it was more than the. Other one we talked about, project imagine, so we'll see what comes out of it, but they're supposed to bring five hundred jobs, I don't, you know, where's that balance?
Right, right, I don't wanna, I don't, I'm not saying it should be discouraging, I'm just saying it needs to be looked at, right?
Because if you're gonna bring in that much, how much, you know, where where's where's it gonna come from?
Where's it gonna come from?
Something's gotta be.
Right.
Somewhere else.
You should do like a water baby exchange, bring a baby in. Don't write that down, Marty. We're doing gun buybacks in Salt Lake, I mean, you know, just be creative. Hey, some to threaten them with, if they're not being good, if if threatening them with. Okay, um what about existing? So that's future development uh reducing demand, what about existing?
That's a tough one, we've had this discussion a few more times, or how do we, how do we? Change culture?
Well, first one is uh.
Charge more.
Financial, yeah, yeah, hit them when it hurts.
Wish we were dead or there really got.
You can buy better, but you can't pay more?
Well, I know by doing the flip the strip, which is funny because like for you, it didn't work because you weren't in the right area, and it it pays pennies on what you're paying to redo this strip. But just having some sort of incentive uh to do your yard, it turns out it doesn't matter how much it is. People are okay getting thirty cents to do a two thousand dollar project, so just having some sort of incentive makes them feel like, okay, I'm gonna do it.
I'm gonna do it and I'm giving back to my community.
But the real stinker is that I got thirty cents.
There's a reward.
And mainly just give them medals or a sign for them to charge.
So Charlie, I have a suggestion, it's gonna be a little touchy.
Give it to me.
So in my area, there's a problem, well-known problem with. Our water and the color of it, the taste, the smell, whether you have a filter or not, it still comes through.
Where are you located?
Taylor.
Okay.
There's a big, a lot of people in the community are complaining, when you call the water company, tell them, hey, I have brown water, it smells like fish. The first thing they tell you to do, run your water until it's clear. Well, I can run my water for two days and it never gets clear, and they never reimburse me in my bill either for running that. And they they also assure you that it's safe and that you have no issues with it. Um but it's hard for, whether it is or not, it's hard for us as residents to say, I feel safe drinking something that smells like fish. That doesn't sound, you know, it just went through my filter and it still smells like fish and it's still brown. So I feel like in our area, there's probably a ton of water waste just in that alone. Oh yeah, exactly, and that's that's the thing they tell you, and if you call and say, hey, I've done that, it still doesn't work. Uh I mean, this is more personal, I guess, maybe, but I've heard from multiple people. You call and you say, hey, I'm I'm not sure, like, why is this? I have brand new water lines, it's brand new development, and they say, well, we're flushing lines, or the last time. We called and asked, we were told, if you want clean, fresh water, you should move closer to the source, which means you should be on the bench. That was literally the response we got from the guy.
Well, well, they're right, because North Ogden's water. Oh, yes.
That's what it was like, it comes, so for me, improve that water by, I don't know, treating it or. Filtering it before it gets to the residents, might be a way to conserve some.
Cause then they're not running the water until it's not brown anymore, so when it comes to brown water, are we talking about old infrastructure that's in old streets as opposed to?
Well, no, it's, I mean, you get, you get a different, yes, the whole line, you get a different story depending on who it is calling, when you tell the call, but. It's, oh, we just tapped into that line, so it's a little bit, which that would make sense, right, that would happen. But it it's the whole line, it's not if you're on a brand new development or older development. I have family that lives on one end of the spectrum and using the same company and they get it and I live on the other side, so.
Well, I live in West Weaver. Still not adopted, that's why I live.
Pretty much, I'm pretty sure you're.
Same way as you, but they put in that new system down by the elementary. My water tastes just like North Ogden smell.
And and we don't have the brown water problem.
But that's iron, it's not buried, it's just iron. Fifty vein on there, and and that's, that's all iron water they pump, it's not, it's not fish.
Is it the inside of the pipes?
What they do with the water when they flush it?
Inside of the pipes that are deteriorating or rusting, or is it?
Iron water. I mean, it comes, but when you drink it, you taste iron, because it comes naturally out of the ground.
Oh, the iron, the iron is what smells like fish.
Yes. Okay, but because I tasted iron water, they had that.
Sometimes I can smell the iron, sometimes it's literally smells like I'm drinking a glass that has a carp in it.
I've never had the.
So this, it's a great suggestion, I think that's uh, it's worth writing down.
Somehow, sometimes they're using uh standpoints, they're gonna get that too, they're using that to water their yard. That's not anything to do with the corner, but some people that you have a corner, I mean, there's even people that are complaining, but I haven't had a problem with their like. My clothes have a round tin to it now, too.
Charlie, you said that we're not all the metering until twenty thirty, but there are large regions that are already metered.
Yeah, so the.
Can we take regions that are metered and start enforcing certain regions?
Well, so that's all up to the water company, the water, right, I mean, we can always encourage those water agencies that are metering.
You guys should be metered, though, because you guys use too much.
So let's encourage metered areas. You're you're right on. Encourage your areas. To up their tiers.
I think they are now, we're getting more, but there's no, there's no real penalty yet.
Wasn't the penalty bailing? Yeah, cause you're, cause you're going into a higher tier.
Or the culinary.
The state also in this legislative session passed where culinary providers have to have that tiered system. Adopted in their plan, so.
So the secondary doesn't even have a tiered system?
I know they're working on it, okay. Well, there, I mean, the twenty thirty things, it's a unrealistic goal.
Okay.
For for what legislature here, I mean, you're not gonna get all metered next week. Even the, even the suppliers say they can't get enough infrastructure or enough parts to meet that goal, so. I think they're working towards it.
I think, uh, I have what I need for that section. Okay, so let's go to page eighty. Nope, sorry, seventy nine.
You're jumping us all around again. Talk for five minutes.
It's eight in the morning, we've been here all night. Uh, okay, so a couple of the ideas that I had already had, uh, exactly what we have here, so amortize existing turf craft. Grass, continue to enforce new water requirements and encourage local water entities to do the same. Require all ditch, uh, all irrigation ditches in the canals to be buried as development occurs.
Good luck with getting it passed.
Passed, adopted or passed as in?
As the developer wanting to do it, cause the canal companies have tried and it doesn't work. Well, and there's a couple of problems with pipelines too out of the country, because there's a lot. There's as much maintenance in a pipe, more maintenance in a pipe than there is in a ditch. Great ideas though.
Okay, to put it on like, okay, so if we create an ordinance that says the developer shall pipe. Uh, yes, yeah, I'm I'm talking about existing open ditches or canals.
I thought we were, I thought we were doing that just from a different perspective.
Only if it's over a certain amount of water.
But I mean going forward to the new general plan, I thought we were gonna implement.
It's a liability that took.
Yeah, exactly, it's a safety, it's a safety issue, yeah. And and I thought that that was something that we needed, and I think that desperately needs, desperately need, uh, be addressed.
Good, okay.
So, okay, so you have a development, they're gonna go ahead and have them do their ditch, right? So it's five acres, only one person's gonna develop at that point, so you're only gonna have a hundred and fifty feet of ditch, you know what I mean?
That's right, that's the kind of thought, but.
So could they do like a deferral?
They could, yeah, we could do like a deferral, we could do, uh, hold it in escrow for some period of time.
Part of my worry with some of this infrastructure anyway, which we'll talk about after the.
So if it was only their frontage, uh, that was pipe, what what is your particular concern with only that part of the pipe?
Well, could you get a good flow going and then you put it in a twenty four inch pipe and all of a sudden your water has a different.
So making sure we've got adequately sized pipes, if we do it that way.
Something, cause I didn't know, cause I know you have that issue sometimes with curb and gutter, sometimes if you do only a section of curb and gutter, it screws up the rest of the roadway.
Yeah, so, yeah, with the curb and gutter, uh, just slightly different because we're looking at, uh, what's the pitch and the grade and where exactly a collection box is gonna be. With a ditch, hopefully, that's a little bit different, cause the the, uh, level of it has already been established, but, um, I don't know.
Cause, okay, so, fine, okay, so I'm thinking of literally a lot right now and, uh. All of the irrigation ditches would actually be on the backside of their lot, so it wouldn't actually be included in the storm drain. Cause it's not on the front of their lot, it's on the back of their lot, but wouldn't that ordinance make it to where they have to? Right, and that's, and and to do your section, you know, is fine, I just don't want it to interrupt anyone's irrigation.
Right, so in a way that doesn't interrupt irrigation and do it in a way that doesn't.
I can guarantee you the property owners on both sides of that pipe are gonna make sure that they're getting their flow. And especially on the, on the flow side of it.
All right, next, we've got opportunities to modify the county's operations to eliminate wastewater. I'm just gonna go through these bullet points, what's already been given to me. If you guys can think of, this is county operation, this is the county government, how do we, how we reduce what we're doing here, okay? Uh, so, uh, bullet point. One, these are quotes, sorry, um, we've eliminated seventy percent of all grass over the last five years with just a smaller area left in front of the building. We've put a new sprinkler system in last year to more efficiently water what we have. All shrubbery and trees that used to be watered have also been eliminated, I think this is regarding this building here. Uh, we will, uh, be watering the grasses asked one day per week, minimal watering, only being used for, uh, industrial use, I don't know what that's. Um, the only thing we could do is eliminate the remaining grass within, uh, with a desert scape and drip system.
Yeah, that's true, it's probably air conditioning here.
I I was thinking it's probably the air conditioning, yeah, cause that's, is that an opportunity? Flipping the ACs instead of swamp cooler kinda style, we.
And and does this building even have a tower, is it all rooftop units?
It's, no, it's, we do it with water, there's no refrigerant here. So fairgrounds.
I haven't seen a building or been in a building out there that's cooling my whole. One building, yeah.
Okay, perfect, that's, that's what I wanna hear. So this is, uh, Jennifer Graham's response, some of this is about the, about the, uh, uh, fairgrounds, some of this is about the ice sheet, okay? So, um, hold on to that thought, so I'll make sure I write that down, hold on, uh. Ice sheet rink replacement rotation has been altered, water, uh, water schedule at Recreation and Golden Spike Event Center is monitored. Water schedule is monitored, I'm gonna put a star there. Um, Duncan has limited the number of times the track maintenance crew can water the track each week. Um, what we could do, so this is both, I think this is all recreational facilities that that Jen is talking about. Repair replaced plumbings, toilets don't need to be flushed three to six times to clear the use. Okay, uh. Uh, motion activated faucets can be wasteful by staying on too long, okay? Motion activated toilets sometimes flush, she probably didn't know I was gonna put her direct quote in here, sorry. Uh, motion activated toilets sometimes flush prematurely or multiple times with movement in the stall, so. One thing we've done in this building is we took out all of the motion sensor, uh, hand washing and and we took out the motion sensor. Uh, actually, I think we just put in new motion sensor toilets, to be honest with you, but we took out the motion sensor hand washing for the same reason. Hand flush toilets is a problem, cause most people like to use their feet instead of their hand and that damages the, uh, plumbing. Be nice if we could, you know, somehow move to. Use your feet or you? Uh, so, instead of flush toilets at some of the parks, so we've got two parks, Memorial Park and, uh, uh. Northport Park, uh, changing them over to vault toilets, uh, replacing grass fields for artificial turf. So I think that's, uh, an element there. Installing a few dishwashers, I don't know what that, I'll have to talk to Jen about that.
They don't have dishwashers, they do it all by hand.
Oh, there, so. Had dishwashers, great. Replacing landscaping with proper zero scape, great. And not pre-setting ice water for banquets, maybe go to a form of the practice, some restaurants have started, not sure what that would look like. We'll have to look into that.
Well, a lot of places you need to ask the water. When I was in Europe, almost every place out past for water. And I think that that'd be a good idea here, too.
Charlie, on that paragraph of Sean's, I think that that minimal water is only being used for irrigation use. Because, because I don't think he would switch to industrial and then go from irrigation to industrial and then back to irrigation with his next line. So I'm thinking that instead of industrial, that might be for irrigation use.
I'll follow it.
Charlie, this might be just way too minor, but with, like in this building, you said you got rid of the, the motion sensor faucets, right? And so now you have regular valves that you can turn on, so. Is there like any, this is like, we're going way into, sorry, is there any study that shows that that's actually conserving water by going back to those? Cause I would think that it would be wasting more water, because the people I know, being in a healthcare background, you leave the water running, you go get paper towel, dry your hands and use that paper towel to shut it off. So it's running the entire time.
It's exactly what somebody else mentioned when we read this, and so that could be problematic, I don't know what studies show. The other problem is, there are at least two people in this building who leave it on, they don't go back to turn it off. I don't know if it's, maybe they were just used to the motion activated ones, where they think it's gonna turn off.
Steve didn't come over and leave a laugh, so.
Okay, all right, so outside of that, I'm gonna hit a little bit harder on what, uh. Sammer said about, um, fairgrounds, fairgrounds, grass.
Thing, you don't have to water it.
And I think that fields, changing fields to turf is something that's listed there, but I'll, I'll reemphasize change fields. Okay, any other ideas for county operations?
Go to the bathroom at home.
Require employees to hold it. I won't work here for very much longer. Okay, flip page over to page eighty. Okay, planning commission shall consider the applicable regional water conservation goals recommended by the Division of Water Resources. So you guys don't have to worry about that, I have already started inserting those. Um, and also, actually, I did already insert that, I already read that to you, reducing usage. That was the only one that I saw, or Weaver Basin. That's their goals, I don't know exactly what their implementation strategies are. Okay, uh, planning commission shall also include a recommendation for water conservation policies to be determined by the county. Okay, landscape options within a public street for current and future development that do not require the use of lawn or turf, so check and check. Okay, review the county's land use ordinances and include a recommendation for changes to an ordinance that promotes inefficient use of water. Ideas on how we can be better about what our ordinance is required. We we've modified our water ordinance recently to try and cut down on uses of water, but also make things a little bit more. Uh, accountable, uh, for both water entities and for the counties.
That's took it out of the counties.
True as well, true as well, accountable, but, um, how can we help the water agencies? Uh, be better with water, is that, is that, is there something we can do? Just looking at you guys, cause you're on the board.
It's a good question, because it's.
What about consolidation of districts under a municipal system? One municipal system to rule them all.
Well, I think it's, it's not necessarily, it's. Well, the system that operates both, because like what we run into is we can only go so far with culvers. You have secondary companies that you gotta deal with, you know. I would rather see your, your water districts provide both services than one, because then you've got a little bit more. Not necessarily saying control, but you can enforce more of those water wise practices.
Encourage districts.
Well, then you could govern where you want to put your bikes.
Yeah.
I mean, it it just, it was a growth force. And I, I think, and as you go, developers could pay for that, every time I try and bring this up, I just give it.
Well, we're gonna put in the plan that that is what the commissioners are gonna do.
A lot in our area.
So control both.
I think they need to consolidate, I think consolidating would be more.
I don't necessarily think consolidating districts, like culinary provider, culinary provider, I mean.
But secondary to culinary.
Brought the two agencies together, culinary and secondary, I mean, I don't see a benefit that you're gonna get, well, if we combine with. And Laura, then it was one big agency, I mean, you're still providing that same amount of water, it's, you need to provide both. Similar to like, uh, the municipal services district in Salt Lake, whether the greater. I can't remember what they call it, but they handle all of that stuff.
Yep, and that's, that's actually, I think, uh, what what Sarah's mentioning and kind of what I'm suggesting is maybe a municipal services district is appropriate. That handles all of the. Ogden Valley is gonna be its own there to tackle, cause there are even something, uh, shared water systems up there. Uh, and so that's gonna be its own little thing, but we're actually talking about a possibility when it comes to both culinary and culinary water and. Sewer water in Ogden Valley, creating one system and working with the existing districts to just essentially absorb.
Oh, that, I agree, that makes sense. The head buddy comes in out here, just because you have private. So, until they're convinced to do something different, different, maybe districting or whatever, you're kinda, you're kinda locked with what we have.
Do you think that that'll, as farmland converts to residential land, do you think that'll take care of itself at some point?
I'd like to think that it would, but I.
Or do you think we should consider?
Yeah.
We've tried and tried and tried, we're desperate. Discussions and benefits and everything else and there's no change that.
I think that it eventually, but it probably won't be my, my lifetime, my lifetime of public service. Because it's, the time's running short on that. Public, not not service, public disservice is probably a better way to put it for me.
Okay, so I have, uh, written here, consider policies or programs to consolidate irrigation resources.
Weaver Basin, Weaver Basin is doing that now, but Weaver Basin wants to be a supplier.
Right.
Right, so they, 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 there's no incentive from them to do anything to to break up the smaller.
Right, right.
Entities, so.
I have seven thirty, you guys have seven thirty or am I? It doesn't have the numbers next to it, it's just the blank.
We can call it eight thirty.
Is this like a formal, sorry, is I'm, I'm dealing with this, is this a formal document that you're putting through or? I'm wondering if I'm reading the statement right, it says, we're gonna promote or promote the inefficient use of water, should that just be efficient use?
Sorry, so recommendation for changes to an ordinance that promotes the inefficient use of water, so changing the promotion of inefficiencies. Yeah, it's a double negative. Yeah, and that state code, uh, almost copied and pasted from it, so.
Thai boy, I'm a small town man.
It's a legislative, legislative council, uh, they seem to like the double negatives, it's very confusing.
Thanks, I'm Sam's mom.
Well, and actually, uh, Ogden Valley, well, Liam's really good at this too, but in the Ogden Valley, we've got Cortland, which you guys have met before, and, uh, Cortland is. He majored in mathematics, is a mathematician, so using him to deconstruct diagram, in diagram sentences to figure out, all right. Where's the negative, where's the positive, what does the but mean, what does the and mean, what does the or mean? He can do it in like a mathematical formula, it's a wizard, that works, that was actually pretty cool. But it also turns into super legalese when a, when a layperson tries to read it, so there's a double, double edged sword there, okay? Next one down, consider principles of sustainable landscaping, including reduc- reduction or limitation of use of lawn or turf. So check, we've already talked about that, promotion of site-specific landscape design that decreases stormwater runoff or runoff of water used for irrigation. So it's the landscape design, what are you guys' thoughts on that?
I guess, how are you gonna site specific to decrease stormwater, I guess, more. More zero scape, so it's not hard surface?
Yeah, maybe so, well, but it'll also absorb it, I guess, so it, uh, percolates or stays there until it evaporates. Yeah, maybe so as well, but it'll also absorb it, I guess, so it uh percolates or stays there until it evaporates or whatever. And isn't just flowing over into the storm drain system.
I think, I think that goes back, it's site specific, so I I think your site specific covers that one.
Yeah, because.
You're gonna have a lot better infiltration in the highlands where out west you're not gonna see it.
Right, right.
Developments, I think you cover.
Well, and and runoff is such a generic term. Because, you know, agricultural runoff is so different than, you know, residential or commercial runoff. You know, agricultural runoff is actually a bonus.
Talking about the teller.
Yeah, teller is part of the system.
Tell tell water, tell water allows you to use that water again on the next, on the next field if you have everything put together right. But even if it, even if it tails off, it's still gonna go into the drainage that goes to the creek, that goes to the river, that goes to the lake.
Right, right.
So.
So children's books.
Yes.
I don't know why she swallowed the fly.
Yeah.
Anyway. Uh, okay. Uh I worked for a preschool for when I was in college and that's one of the songs that I was singing. Over and over and over.
The the zero scape causing problems, eliminating soil, replacing grass and barbs. And just making sure we have something that still allows water to go into ground when we actually have water.
Right, right. That's that's kind of what my thoughts are as well. And zero escaping, I mean, rocks. All that kind of stuff will still. Yes, yeah, and so let's, let's get to the side of this, uh when we're looking at eliminating certain or reducing landscape standards. We need to do what we can to help. Treat the urban heat, uh her urban heat island effect as well. So green is still good, just drip irrigation is better than shrinkle irrigation. Yeah, you can have a pretty green yard without having grass and still have it pretty water wise. Um there is a. Who who's promoting it? Might be the state who's promoting it, but there uh it's a Instagram account that I follow, but. Basically shows how to um zero scape your yard. I think it might be promoted by Jordan Water Conservancy District or something like that, but. So local, it's a Utah uh nonprofit agency that uh every week or so they've got. Uh they post a picture of the yard that was re landscaped and it shows exactly what species they used and what it looks like. It's actually really cool. And it's, I think, helping encourage people to see that they can do this in their yard and the state has a fifty percent uh contribution. So through, well, if you're covered by Weaver Basin, Weaver Basin has uh a grant essentially that will pay for fifty percent of you. Flipping your yard into something else.
Oh, they already have that?
If you're covered by them.
They'll pay fifty percent of the cost of your.
Of you redoing the landscaping in your yard. As long as it is water wise. Now, I think there's a limit. There's not a threshold per yard, but.
Five bucks.
Uh, okay, next one down, preservation and use of healthy trees that have a reasonable water requirement or are resistant to dry dry soil conditions. I'm kind of thinking that shouldn't say trees, I think trees and shrubbery, vegetation, tree shrubbery to vegetation.
Trees in particular help shake the ground.
Let's stick with trees then. I think that's maybe why they focused in on trees. Okay. But you get a broader canopy, I think, with a single tree. And I I would guess, don't know this for sure, I'm not a botanist. But I would guess that a tree probably get a higher shade ratio, shade to water ratio than with a shrub.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, I am not a good example of this either. I've got a small pond and I have a koi pond in my backyard.
I don't even mean the pond, the pool.
I wouldn't put pool in there, not because of by the pools, but actually it's it's a problem. The public pool issue across the state is a is a problem. It's pretty sad, the lack of public school, public pool access for for children in the state. So if we're gonna use our water, I mean, the tiny amount we're gonna save by regulating pools, I just don't think it's worth including it.
What about the splash pad?
We need them. I just don't think it's that, like.
This year because of the drought. To a point.
Yeah, yeah. The smell chlorine.
There's certain towns that will not. The small amount of water they're using in the grand scheme of things is is pretty sad. So I personally. Wouldn't.
So, so these bullet, these bullet points aren't my bullet points, these are actually adopted in state code. Now, it does say the planning commission, so let's go back and look at how that was. Shall. Consider principles of sustainable landscaping, including, and then jumping down. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have a standard to eliminate. It's just find ways to perhaps encourage. I don't know. I mean, I think what we can do.
Word is regulation, right? That doesn't mean we're.
Elimination or regulation.
Yeah, I think I promote them actually. I just know when you do it, you have to mind we're paying a little more on your money on your bill. That's why I did county, doesn't want to buy it. That's why we don't have them for public use.
But we have just barely satisfied this requirement because we did consider it and we decided we're not going to.
What about uh collecting water? Out of your ring, others.
So that's actually related to what, yeah, what Sarah said uh earlier, I think just before you came in. It is, there is, and you can, you know, you can, so you can collect it for your own sister and then get, I do that. In fact, that's. So I told you I have a koi pond in my backyard. That's how I keep, I don't ever fool it up. I just wait for it to rain, hope it rains when it starts to get low. There, there was a couple of times last year that I had used my culinary water and that it cost so much. It was not worth it, so.
At least they're cooked, you know, water gets low, then at least your fish are cooked by then the boil and you just eat them.
Cut up some carrots, potatoes.
There's some evaporation and they.
So it's not, not whether they're using the.
Yeah. Reduction of yard waste, which by the way, deeper pools better than shower pools because of the evaporation. Um, okay, reduction of yard waste. Somebody help me understand why that is. Okay, we consider it.
What are they talking about as yard waste?
Don't know. Yeah, that may be.
Spray it out of your driveway or something.
Maybe that.
I think yard waste is the green clippings and.
Well, you want to keep that because that. So maybe it's a reduction of.
Water.
Wasting water in a yard. Use of an irrigation system, including drip irrigation, best adapted to provide the optimal amount of water to the plants being irrigated. So we've talked a little bit about that. Um I will put a star by that because I think we'll just put a a recommendation at the end. Challenge in this is somebody puts in a drip system, number one, we have to have a very specific landscape um covenant with them. And if they violate that, somebody here has to know that there is that covenant that says something specific about that specific property. So going back to site specific, like, it's great for the state to sit in their, you know, high tower saying, consider these things, but there is. Very minimal way that we can even catch somebody who's violating existing ordinances, let alone very complicated covenants that. Uh we'll get things on a case by case basis. So my suggestion on on stuff like this is. Um let's see what we can do to create a standard that we can apply across the board that is easily visible from the street. For an enforcement agency or easily visible from the neighbor's yard and essentially we're.
System is hard to, because you can't see it, but plants are dead, so you can see that.
Yeah, so it's it's not necessarily that, it's that when we're looking at um drip irrigation systems that are best adapted to provide optimal amount of water. To the plants being irrigated. So, um, yeah, and I'm talking about, alright, are we overwatering this specific shrub? I can't tell. I'm not gonna know unless we go in there and start looking at individual drip systems. And honestly, that is the solution. It's, what does the meter say? It's just, how do we get from here to six years?
They're using a drip irrigation system promoting that over a sprinkling system. That's where I see our, our, our places.
Promote.
Or um when they come to landscape design plan for a commercial development, that's something you look at and say, okay, this should be sprinkled, this should be drip.
Great, and we do have something in our uh design review code that incentivizes drip irrigation over sprinkle. Um but there's incentive, like a a standard requirement.
Which by reducing that green, we used to require.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, agreed. Uh keep, go up to the um industrial part that the that's in the unincorporated area in Pleasant View. I mean, there's just grass everywhere. Whose idea was that? But we probably got a minimum. Okay, so again, put in the next bullet point into context, the planning commission shall, oh, sorry, the planning commission may. So previous one was shall, may include recommendations for additional water demand reduction strategies, including. Creating a water budget associated with a particular type of development.
Yeah, and you know, they really did this at forty thousand feet.
And to scratch the itch that everyone's knocking on.
Yeah, because because there's no rhyme or reason to that. What what depends on the development. If it's residential, commercial, if it's heavy, commercial or or even industrial, I mean. Okay.
So one of the things, this bullet point, I think that we could do, if we had that table filled in where we know these are the uses. Of existing land uses, this is how it stands today, this is where we want to be at some point in time in our own goals for reduction. Then we could say, alright, that is a residential development. We want to see less than X number of gallons per capita per day being used in that development, but. Okay, we'll consider it, we'll see what we can do in in creating some kind of a policy in that, no, no, okay. Adopting new or modified lot size configuration landscaping standards that will reduce water demand for new single family development. We're already working on that in our land use code, right?
Yeah, but I think we're too stringent or not stringent at all. Like those mega sites that we do well, well. We should have commercial for chicks provided. And feather it out to the people who can afford a million dollar house for fifteen thousand square foot wide.
Yeah.
And we should have a big enough and enough density in there that the predominant religion can have a war. Three people in there and then there's only. There's only fifty percent that are monitoring now, so there should be enough room for three ideology. So that we can increase, if we want to save our land out west, we've got to increase our density drastically. I get so that the people that want to all can afford. Then that that farmland will stay where it's at, and that's your open space.
Yeah.
But if we don't increase that, where we have the high rise, like ten stories right in the middle.
Ten stories.
Ten stories. Then the manager, then the manager of the Chick-fil-A can live there.
So we're already.
Can walk, walk there, the kids, you know, whatever job.
The expense actually goes up after.
So, the. The form based village code that we started implementing in Ogden Valley, I do anticipate using that out west if you guys are comfortable doing, so we'll talk about that when we get there.
What was that?
It's a form based village code, but what it does is allows up to fifty foot tall buildings. So when we're talking about density in those um commercial cores, as well as in the the mixed residential that surrounds those commercial cores. Um it would allow up to fifty foot tall buildings in those locations. So it's not quite the ten story that you're thinking of, but you can get a four or five story. Okay, and it's just, just, it's just clustered in those little nuggets. I I do agree, it'd be nice to see that feathered out a little bit more, but. Commissioners aren't quite there yet. Actually, I would like to get it adopted, and then if we need to, we'll readdress it.
Let's give that ten years.
Okay, uh next bullet point, provide one or more water reduction incentive. For existing landscapes and irrigation systems and installation of water fixtures or systems that minimize water demands. This is um. We don't, because we don't have, we don't control water, right? Come on down, we'll not make you do any landscaping and we'll give you a free permit. You know, this uh what we did do in our um design review code is we said uh in in place of trees. You could do alternative measures of shading, which are are cheaper than installing trees, so maybe we could find a way to do this. Just up a little bit more thought into that, but yeah, we'll find some. Okay, next bullet is discouraging incentives for economic development activities that do not adequately account for water use or do not. Include strategies for reducing water demand. That hits exactly what you just uh said. How do we balance these idea of. Several million gallon uh uses um versus what kind of economic input is going to provide for us. So we'll. I'll address that right there.
Cannot measure joy and chance.
They don't replace the water in pools with water. That's the only way I'll get in one of them.
Hey, it's a, it's a reuse thing. Eighty, eighty-one. Uh, that's supposed to be a P, adopting water concurrency standards requiring that adequate water supplies and facilities are or will be in place. For new development. I still do not understand this bullet point. I feel like that's already requirement of state code. You cannot develop if you don't have enough water. This isn't the first time that I've seen this come up and other people are talking about it, so I gotta figure out what exactly they're talking about for. It shouldn't be, state code says you shouldn't be approving subdivisions unless they approve.
In Ogden Valley, did they approve? Say, oh wait, just kidding, you don't have water.
Oh. So, well, um that was, that was uh Wolf Creek. What's that?
There's one out in Weaver County right now. It's still jumping the hoops and can't give women a miss because water's not adequate.
But did they get a?
It's a bad thing to have or a good? Okay.
I think we fixed that.
Yeah, so, so the. Ogden Valley issue would be the same kind of issue out west if Taylor West Weaver. Had over allocated its water, had 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 approved a whole bunch of subdivisions without.
Yeah.
Without noticing that it had already over allocated what its water.
As far as that allocation goes, see, our model, Taylor's Weaver's models and everything are for that point four five. Outside you, or excuse, inside you zone. Well, now that you're seeing restrictions come on secondary and all that, then guess what? They're using. That point four five, the owner, the landscape outside.
Have you guys adopted extreme tier pricing?
Yes.
You know, only the wealthy people are gonna be the ones who are wasting water at.
You know what? They're using three hundred plus gallons a month because they want that green lawn and they don't care what they're doing.
Yeah, that's.
Water in the middle of the day, you know, all of the stuff you put in place to stop them.
But they have, that's the only, that was the only option.
Something, for some it is.
Yeah, there's some that.
If you get a three hundred, four hundred dollar a month bill for water, how much is that landscape really worth? And for some it is, and they can afford it. For a lot, it's not.
They don't have the water they want every day.
Yeah.
So what about these dairies that use a lot of culinary water?
Well, I think wheat, why are you wanting stricter, stricter regulations on that?
And they eat forty, fifty gallons a day.
They're required to use culinary, right?
Well.
That's what I'm saying.
To supply for that, but when it comes into their planning practices and stuff, I guess, then they have to use.
But they're paying for it, right?
Well, are they paying for it at the same rate that I pay if I line over by metal lumber or they get a better deal?
I know. We'll look to you guys on that. Do you guys know?
Depends on the operation. There, there was an exemption clause in there for agricultural operations when it comes to. I mean, because they're, they're feed, they're, they're watering cows, they're, you know what I mean?
So I guess uh.
I didn't know that.
Think about the economic ripple effect of that. More dollars a gallon per mill. Because they're paying more in culinary water.
Well, I, I think that, you know, it's, it's one of those issues that's sitting there. But the only problem I have for is these gentlemen paying more on their bill. So Mr. Dairy Farmer doesn't have to pay as much.
That's right.
I mean, I got, now I built a gold medallion house, remember the electric coins? And it was pretty good, actually. I heated that house. Uh, it was probably two hundred a month, which was a lot back in the seventies, but it was good. Then the people come and says, well, these guys using more power, they're being wasteful. Just like that, my bill went to six fifty a month. Yeah, so, uh, you know, I, I mean, I, I kind of get the plight of what's going on here, but at the same time, you know, where, where is the line really drawn?
That's a, that's a good question.
Because when, when you get thinking about it, you know, and I don't know what price amount now, that's I imagine it's over plenty. But the, the feed's high, but there's a surplus of milk. So does that have to be water in those cows? I mean, that's a good question.
There's a shortage of beef, just saying.
Well, it's not on the hook. You've got three manufacturers that process beef. That's a problem.
So I think what you're saying, Wayne, is charge them the same as everybody else, and then if you choose to buy their product, then you're going to inherit that cost.
Well, I think what I'm saying is, is, is it fair and equitable? Just because they do it because they have the act pay, or is fair and equitable somewhere between?
So would asking them to pay their fair share in terms of culinary water, would that put them in a disadvantaged uh disadvantaged position when it comes to competing with dairy farms outside? That's one of the questions I guess I would put forward there, because if that's the case, if they're competing for our market share with another agency or sorry, another farm outside, that doesn't have to pay that same amount, that's, that's just a.
Yeah, and they answer those costs because maybe they're not wasting it like the average householders, you know?
Well.
It's not local. You're not talking about a local market, you're talking about, yeah, you're talking about a regional market, right? And, and so commodities, commodities are traded every day, bought and sold. And futures, future commodity futures are bought and sold every day. That, those are for sixty or ninety days into the future. That's what controls the market for agriculture, for, for large agriculture.
Right.
Um, it's, it's kind of, that's a catch twenty-two.
Right.
It could go this way and it could go this way, you know? It, it depends on, it, it, well, and I'm not sure how much the farmer ever really does win because his commodity price is very cheap. Um, the, but the, but the guy that's, the guy that's processing that beef or processing that milk, they can set that price because they're direct to the, to the consumer. Pretty hard for a farmer to be, to be direct unless he's carved out a niche in the local community to do it himself, and most large operations haven't done that. They won't do that.
But, okay, I didn't, I didn't know where you were going, but that, that's the concern that I have. So in that context, it's the, uh, the processor who's going to be looking to pay for the milk. The farmer's going to be paying the higher water prices here versus that farmer over there, uh.
Look what just happened in Beaver County on Friday. When, when Smithfield came in and said they're cutting that operation by sixty-five percent?
Eventually, it's going to be eliminated, isn't it?
Well, that, that put that county into an, they declared an economic disaster on Friday because of one largest scale operation. Granted, it's a lot, I mean, it's more rural than here, but I mean, you gotta take that into effect a little bit, I feel. I mean, that, that's changing an entire.
So in terms of culinary water use, I don't know how to plug that in.
Well, I, I just.
I, I, I think that's up to the culinary water provider. Why are we putting our hands in it? You pushed everything, the, the county has pushed everything else when it comes to regulation on the water.
When this landed on my desk, I was like, we just got out of this business.
But I mean, you could promote things and, and recommend, but there's no regulation.
Are you bringing back on track?
Okay, so we'll leave the, we'll leave that, that out unless.
No, that's fine. I just know. Someday, it's going to be a very valid.
It's a good point, it's a good point. There was a lot of discussion about it.
Yeah.
Several hours. Yeah, several hours that night.
Uh, okay, next bullet point. Shall include a recommendation for low water use landscaping standards for a new commercial industrial institutional development, common interest community and multifamily housing projects. So we, we've already discussed that, I think. Read through the culinary water section, secondary water. I still haven't put a ton in here, but let's see. I don't know why I wrote the irrigation company, I need to figure that out. They're basically the only one out there, I mean, that's why. Uh, what provides pressureized secondary.
Did they get a grant? I'm curious.
No, I didn't.
That's why I hope when, tell me, I probably looked for somebody that has enough water and careful what they go already.
You know who that is?
Yeah.
Me too. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's, I, you, you know, I don't know about private water companies versus water districts. I don't understand enough about that.
What, what do you want to know?
Well, I just uh, I, 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 I guess, and I'll just say this, Randy and Jeff's little water thing seems to be working pretty good out there. They seem to have uh plenty of water. And so I guess is if you, and I guess the way that it's been working down on Warren is, is when people come back for secondary water, they get a letter from Randy and Jeff. And so I, I guess it's working, but my mind uh, and, and maybe I'm wrong here, I, I hope I am, but uh, if you're a, uh, if you're a water entity, you have a bunch of state requirements, and I guess is these private ones have the same requirements?
They do have the same requirements.
So if they do, then I guess it's, doesn't matter.
But you gotta look at two different operations. You, that's where the culinary and your secondary water play into it. And, and really, there's not very many private water companies out there in the state or private entities.
They're probably all in Ogden Valley, every single one of them.
Well, they're still. Different though, and they kind of like putting water to the back when they get there.
Yeah, sixty years.
You, you had a mountain, let's build on it. Yep, there's a creek up there, we will build upon, and that's.
Yeah.
There's different tiers of regulation in the state, just like with anything, and it all goes back to a number of connections, and if you're seasonal or year-round and stuff, and that's where the Ogden Valley's at.
It's really simple for the water company that we have out here, the one and only that provides pressurized secondary. They don't want to lose, they don't want to become a district because they don't want to lose the water out of their canal. They don't want to lose control over that because if they lose the water out of their canals, they lose head. If you don't have head, you can't push that water on gravity flow irrigation.
Yeah.
And so really, it's really that simple. So until we get over fifty percent residential, you're not going to see a change. Yeah, and, and, and it's okay. It really needs to be that way for now. But eventually, it's going to change because the sell of property, the, the, the changing of the property from one use to another is going to drive it. So that's where you're, that's where you're basing.
Lose control of you.
You're losing control of your head. You're losing control of your head pressure, and, and they won't do it. And, and like you say, if I'm in the ag business, if, if I got my ag hat on, I'm saying, no, I don't want to do that. And if I've got, you know, my planning hat on or whatever makes more sense for the future, then I'm saying that's eventually what it's going to have to be.
So it forces them to go to a pressurized system if they lose the private, is that what you're saying? They lose the pressure?
Not necessarily, because they're building a pressurized system now, but it goes back to funding and stuff like that. It's got to be driven from growth. If they're smart, they're going to try and secure up as much as they can, so you don't lose that coming out of the canal. Eventually, as, as big as this water plant getting, legislature's going to change it. And make it so these private companies can't say, yes, you own a share in this, but you can't move that water somewhere. They're going to come in and say, look, if it's coming from the same source, you can move that water anywhere you want, along that source. And that's going to change the game big time. So these irrigation companies get smart that work with this and build these pressurized systems, because guess what? That flow comes down the canal, it keeps head, it keep volume, it keep flow. Even though it diverts into a pond, that then converts into pressurized, right? It still benefits both sides.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's the problem that they're, they're understanding right now. And it's only one company on the area, the other company, you can move that water where you want.
Yeah, and, and, and that's called a point of diversion. So your point of diversion, you could, you know, ideally, you'd be able to move it from Hooper's Point of Diversion to Weaver Basin's Point of Diversion or to Pine View's Point of Diversion. But that's not how this can, this now company runs.
So that's why they're holding on to it. Once they, they'll, they'll lose there.
Say developer comes in to that Indian organ and has no water, comes down here, buys a bunch of water down here, moves it up there, then they've lost that. You know, that volume.
They lose that volume in their canal system. Therefore, they lose head pressure. Therefore, you can't move the water across the fields like, like it was established to do. And last year was a perfect shining example. There wasn't enough water in the canals to push the water over the ground timely. So you'd get, you, you, first of all, you were restricted way back on how much time you had. And then you'd get the water halfway down the field, and you kill your hay because you, ideally, you've got to be able to water that hay from one end to the other and be done with it. You can't start and stop because when you do that, it kills it. So that's what, that's what this, this dichotomy is that we're going through right now.
Don't want to.
They want to lose the control of that water.
Then it could be moved anywhere in the system. They want to make sure it stays right.
Right, where it's at, right. Yeah. And, and it's, and it's, it's purposefully done that way because that's the way it was established. That's the way it was, it's supposed to be. Um, the problem is we're running out of water, and the other problem is, is we're growing population, growing development. So you've got this constant.
But it would, I mean, theoretically, it, it, it can move along the system, but the problem is the pressure. So if it's, if it's pressurized system, that eliminates part of the contention with.
Yes, I know. You're, you're.
You got head pressure.
Yeah.
And, and that's the two that you have, you're right against.
But yeah, you can't gravity, they're, they want to stay with that, with the flood irrigation system. It's hard to flood irrigate.
Without head pressure.
Without head pressure.
Yeah.
But they could fill a pond and pressurize it if.
Mechanically, yes, yeah. But then, but then the water from that, to get those pipelines in the ground and get them to fields. It's a pure infrastructure nightmare, could never happen.
Say it again, could never happen, why?
Because of the cost, the infrastructure cost of pressurizing an entire system for agriculture. It, it just, it's, it's not feasible.
Um, yeah, the volume plus the infrastructure on the other side.
They did that, they did that to a system in Ogden Valley, but I'm curious if they're, uh, how they pressurized it.
Well, the monastery pressurized their own water. The monastery always had sprinklers up there.
So there's a, it's adjacent to the monastery, it's the same area, though. Uh, there was a, a ditch company that went through and pressurized everything up there. And I'm, I'm curious.
I think they're in an article, if you look, it's someone in you taught, uh, someone up there voluntarily pressurized their system to save water. And they said it was a thirty percent savings in water.
Yeah.
So part of me is wondering is if these farmers were presented with the option to sell thirty percent of their water and use that water to pressurize their system, then they got the money to pressurize to create.
That's, there's a money side of it's going to be there.
If somebody, if somebody goes and puts the infrastructure in, I want infrastructure, boom, and it's there. Problem is the cost of that infrastructure. The thirty percent, the thirty percent or the value of the water will never pay for that infrastructure either.
And that could, um, I don't know, water's getting, water's getting more valuable, so thirty percent is something.
That being said, why did that company do it? They just had the extra funds to be able to do it?
Yeah.
Size, I mean, if it's, how big of a, of a company was that up in the Ogden Valley?
They serve the, so Huntsville, uh, you look in everything east of Huntsville before you get a canyon on the foothills. So it's quite a bit of acreage that they serve. Ironically, when they, when they went to pressurize, the, the water that was no longer leaching out of the ditches was no longer charging the Ogden Rivers. The Ogden, the south, south, uh, fork went dry uh halfway through the year because they, they pressurized, but regardless. I don't know exactly how many users they had.
There's things everywhere, and then guess what? It's going to cost something on the back.
Well, it's, it's, it's all good and it can all be done. The problem is the price tag that goes with it.
Well, thirty percent water save, I, I guess it depends on what the state wants to do to subsidize that pressurized system. We're talking about a thirty percent water savings just for agriculture is a huge chunk of uh, that's a much bigger chunk than anything we can do in our culinary savings or in our yards. And so putting money towards that to help subsidize it somehow, I think would be the biggest water savings we can do.
So, but here's a goal, um, encourage, encourage cooperate with, uh, we were based on water conservancy district and state to provide availability of funding to pressurize irrigation.
There, there's a big push to do that now, but it just goes back to infrastructure costs are so high. I looked at it last year, I even was awarded a grant, to put thirty acres under a pivot. They were going to give me twenty grand to do a project that was going to cost a hundred. So when I look at the long-term benefit, how do I ever get the return on that thirty acre field to pay back eighty thousand dollars?
You won't get that eighty thousand dollars back.
Why would I do it, even though they give me twenty thousand dollars in free money?
Okay.
It just.
Fifteen years ago, it cost thirty grand.
That's the, our infrastructure costs have gone so high that it, I mean, it just.
But still, the water is so valuable that if the state wants to spend money and actually make a difference.
They could, but, but area by area, you're going to already have pressurized systems. Cash Valley is a lot of pressurized already. Weaver County is not.
Sure, and, and I think that's my, that may be what.
That's what happened up there.
You stock did, because they.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the, up in the hun- up in Huntsville, that's how, that's how the monastery used to pressurize theirs. It came down the hill a hundred and fifty thousand miles an hour, and, and they could push those sprinklers without a problem. They didn't have, they didn't have any power use whatsoever, and their infrastructure costs were minimal.
Interesting. Well, maybe uh figuring out ways to encourage these systems, you know, providing funding, looking for funding, whatever it is, we'll, we'll get it in the plan to. I mean, there's not a whole lot the county can do.
No.
But maybe we could find ways to provide some words of encouragement, positive words of affirmation, I don't know.
Well, and, and I think.
That's darn it, people like you.
You, you know, in the county, in the county, to, to kind of back up just a half a step, the county did try. They tried to get, they tried to get like Hooper Irrigation some money off the ARCA money to see if they could improve their secondary pressurized system.
And that's exactly.
They, and they did, and it didn't succeed because that's not what, that was an allocation issue. Yeah, that's not that, what, what that money was for.
Right, okay, okay. Okay, fair. Um, so we actually merged right into the next discussion point, which was wastewater. Um, or excuse me, which was irrigation water. Um, Wayne, just to clarify a little bit more on the, your original question that led to that conversation was differences between the district and the, the company, right? Aside from some of the regulations that, that Ben mentioned, it's governance. The district, you've got taxing authority, you've got bond authority, whereas a company, you've got, you can get take loans. District is a elected board accountable to an electorate, so to the, to the people who vote them in. Where a company, uh, it's, you know, you still have a board, a lot of times you still do elections, but their bylaws are our corporate, all that kind of stuff are governed differently.
The big service area too.
Yeah.
Because if you're a service district, you go in and set a boundary and say, everything in this area, we will provide.
Right, but you gotta be voted in, you've got the protests, uh, all that. Right, but you got to be voted in, you've got the protests, uh, all that kind of stuff.
And and that's that's great if you can get somebody convinced to do it, but you can't get people convinced.
No, you you know, I got a a general question about grants and things. Does the county have somebody sniffing for grants for different kinds of things?
No, it it kind of depends on what it is, but um, our economic development, um, director goes out looking for grants for infrastructure. I don't know that they'd be sniffing out this kind of stuff, but we have it in the plan and all of the notes in the plan.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, some some days you're going to have to have some grants, I think. Cause there's been money out there from time to time.
So you are taking us to one. Wastewater.
Sorry, I didn't mean those.
Yes, we can, and I know, uh, Jill had a question first, so I want to make sure.
There might be, we'll see if we have any.
So we've got a joint work session with the county commission, uh.
This question might have more to do with the ordinance changes that are going to follow this. Does that make sense?
Let me answer that question before we all leave today, because. So the week before, it's the twenty second.
Twenty seconds, the joint, oh, I got twenty.
I got twenty first, or we're talking June?
Yes. It is the twenty second.
And the twenty ninth.
The twenty second from four to six, that's when we have the commissioners.
Okay, and then and then do we still have, do we still have the one on the eleven?
Yes.
With with the commissioners as well? No, just just another.
The the eleventh, I think I have scheduled as your hearing, if you're ready for a hearing of that.
I have the schedule up here.
If you guys are ready for it, hopefully by that time, we're, I mean, even if it's not crystal clear and they're, you know, the eyes dotted and t's crossed. I would rather address some of the concerns that the public's going to have a little early if we need to. Unless you guys are so convinced that this should be adopted, that you already have your minds made up, then rip off the Band-Aid, I guess. But that's the plan right now. Yeah, you bet. Okay, wastewater, let me just tell you what the plan right now for wastewater is. So you just heard today that Little Mountain is expanding its boundaries. Uh, it cannot serve a ton, but it has a lot of capacity to serve now. Um, it also is essentially a non-conforming system. The state doesn't like within systems, and so, um, we're still pretty limited there. The county is chasing money. We got a little bit of money, but not enough, not as much as we wanted to find a way to connect. Uh, Little Mountain and Central Luba. Um, so that there is essentially community wide sewer, um, in the western area, and that's the plan for sewer, is to work towards it. And they're looking to do something similar in the Ogden Valley. So that's true. I mean, I would guess next ten years. Yeah, uh, at least connecting systems. Um, and then as quickly as developers can build truck lines at that point, because once the main is in, we know where they're going. Yeah, it uh, it's it's going to be pretty quick, I think.
Yeah, once you, once you open that door, it's gonna.
Go. That's right, that's right. Well, it's one of the reasons why the industrial area is such a hard sell, right? But once, once that's not an issue, uh, industrial will go too. Um, okay. Surface and stormwater, uh, Jill, I captured, uh, some of your concerns there, and so that discussion we had a little bit earlier, so I'll make sure we get that addressed. Uh, electric power, natural gas, any thoughts, comments, suggestions? I don't have a ton going on here, and I don't have a ton of control.
All private.
Is it generally like, are we burying power lines at all?
Let's say.
All the new.
All the new are.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, uh, it really kind of depends on how closely our engineering division is watching, I think. Um, and what it means to bury a line, I didn't realize had more than one ways to interpret. Because are you, if you already have a power line that runs there, are you burying the line that exists, or are you burying the new lines only? My interpretation of where I could have written is all lines need to be buried whether they, whether they exist or burning. Uh, but it's a hard sell, because you've already got an existing, uh, utility facilities there, but then you're spending extra dollars to put them down. Power company estimates it's three times as expensive down the ground as it is over. We do for new development, so our engineers have been pushing just new stuff. I would like to see new development underground adjacent power. So where the utility lines come across the front edge or whatever it is, go underground, cut across, back up again. And move until eventually you'll have enough underground then, as the power company change. Yeah, it'll be that, but as the power company changes things up and as road infrastructure is rebuilt, the condo is going to be laid.
I want to back up to the surface and stormwater for a minute. Is there any possibility of having? Some entity of the county other than the road department and and kind of a half attempt on the engineering front to do something with that? You know, maybe maybe somebody that their primary job is that in engineering with, you know, working with the road department, because that's where the equipment is, that's fine. But but I I really don't think that we're suited very well for the growth that we have. That deals with with, um, uh, stormwater and surface water.
We need a a western, not just western Weaver, but the, uh, essentially Weaver County flood control district.
Yeah, something something along those.
None there, district, whatever, if it's in an entity within. Yeah, so that you have those issues like you brought up earlier. As it comes down, the communications there, everyone's working.
Question, where's the funding coming from, right? And so if we create the utility, I mean, it it would. Creating the utility is going to be a little bit easier than creating a district, because you've got to get everyone to essentially, well, it's not everyone. You have to make sure you have less than seventy percent of the people, um, protesting the creation of that new taxing fee, right? Whereas a district, you're creating an utility fee, that's, I don't know, all the things that go into that, but I know it's a county commission kind of decision.
It can be as simple as a WACO group, they already meet. And your funding, what already is being charged as utilities.
In the existing municipal areas.
All of them, county needs to adopt it.
Oh, adopt a utility fee.
And then all of them say one dollar out of that utility fee that they pay goes into this. WACO fund, similar to the transportation funds, and guess what? Then when projects need to happen, you go apply, just like they did for transportation projects to get funding. And then that's how that projects move. Then when big things come on, you know, there's a discussion between all of them. But the problem is, is your WACO group, WACO is a good way to. You have a bunch of mayors that have no idea what's going on.
They're not a manager.
And and then I'm, I'm talking on the other side of that too, on the development side, that there's actually somebody in engineering that cares about that stuff. Because we don't have that overwatch on the developers. And they're getting away with some stuff that they shouldn't be getting away with.
To a point, but I I think where that comes in good is, and there's also some savings there, because. You're developing out here where it's going to take, like we talked earlier, a bigger pipe than what it would take if they opened the start of the stream. You know, that's.
We do stormwater, I think we do take stormwater impact fees right now.
Yes.
I think we have that, which can go towards implementing the stormwater. So, okay, here's what I have. Create stormwater utility, create new position to manage, uh, stormwater. Consider countywide stormwater management.
Bring George Berbidge's position back that was here twenty years ago.
Okay.
The county used to have a position here.
Was that roads division, was that engineering?
He probably just made somebody mad and they put him out of pasture. Here, take this job, till you retire.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for them to give me that job. Where's the pasture? I'm going to start wearing a tie, just to offset it.
I I I just think there's, there should be more attention given to that than than what we've had in the past, and especially on the development side.
Okay, I'll chat with the engineers as well, just to make sure we don't have any pickups and I'll I'll report back to you guys with the more complete section there. Okay, power, so bury power lines, uh, we're gonna, on the map, we're going to identify the, uh, transportation corridors. Um, which, one of the things that I know the state wants us to do is identify transportation and trans, oh, I say transportation, I'm in transmission.
I was going to say, where are we getting back into transportation? We already jumped down.
It's sending, it's transporting stuff, right? Okay, uh, the uh, the state wants us to identify essentially utility corridors, regardless of what the utility is. So we don't have a bunch of utilities crisscrossing and mismatching. We just say, if you're going north, south, here's your utility corridor. When a new pipeline, a pipeline is built, it's not the whole state, you know, crisscross with pipelines, it's generally following existing utility corridors. So you'll see, uh, an update available in the mass. Um, we already show smart, in our smart growth principles, solar panel rooftops. I was really surprised to hear Commissioner Jenkins say, why are we trying to incentivize? Why don't we just require? Like, okay, tell me on this list what it is you want to mandate as opposed to incentivize, and I don't know that he would be of one to mandate solar, solar rooftop. That I, I feel like that should be incentivized, not not required, but what do you guys think?
There's going to be a benefit to it. Because if I'm going to put something on my house, yeah, it might save me a power bill, but you're paying for. You know, you got advertised out of your house, your infrastructure, essentially, the solar panels. They have a life, just like everything else.
Right, so I I guess, uh, what I heard Commissioner Jenkins saying, and I don't know if he meant this across the board, maybe it was more a point of policy than it was. Something to implement. Um, was if we're going to be giving them three times as much density, we're giving them cash. So why don't we just require these things, not incentivize with more density? So this is the kind of the question of, all right, everyone's going to, not everyone, a lot of people go into third acre lots. But maybe they can get quarter acre, or maybe they give, squeeze out that extra lot, or whatever it is, if they've got these kind of things in the development. Solar panels or the battery backup, or maybe it's a higher efficiency rating, uh, buildings or, you know, whatever. Thoughts? It's a, yeah, yeah, that would be, so like, you guys want to squeeze out that extra lot, then put this cabinet on your subdivision that says. All of, anyone who builds in here has to have battery backup, which, right now, the power companies incentivize that pretty heavily. With solar panels.
I don't know how I feel about that right now, it's in my mind much at this point.
That's okay, it'll it'll, uh, it'll be in the plan for you to talk about it later. To write, require. I like incentivizing it as well.
But then, but then does that, now now, does the incentive change from the higher density to to contribute to the open space?
Yeah.
To the rooftops? I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing a mix of a mix of different things where incentives could be taken.
That was kind of my objective in the smart growth strategies. Looking at it as kind of a menu, like, maybe we say, if you want to maximize your density, you're going to have all of these things. If you want to be somewhere in between third acre lots and quarter acre lots, or whatever it is, then choose something here. Natural gas, any thoughts on natural gas?
Well, I haven't eaten anything for a while, so I'm good.
I'm going to bring some, uh, Mexican food next time. Uh, high efficiency homes is the only thing I have for natural gas, and I don't know if there's anything that we should be putting in there. Um, I know there was a big push of the legislature this last year to limit the expansion of natural gas. Do you have any desire for that?
Well, they they now, they they've kept.
Gas is the only way to go. And they have incentives if you have a whole gas hole. It's the cleanest form of fuel as well.
Right, they've they've capped the old landfill, right? They're not taking natural gas out of there anymore.
They believe they are.
I don't know. Uh, like, were they capturing natural gas? They had like the.
The methane.
Right here in town?
Yes, yeah, out here west of the light up.
Well, let's encourage that, encourage, actually, that's not a bad idea, because we have in that industrial area. If we can incentivize or encourage them to reclaim their own methane, uh, can reuse that. Uh, yeah, Salt Lake County has a great facility, it's, it's a hundred percent self-powered. Um, plus there's extra that goes into the grid, and then they, uh. The golf course next door, or at least there used to be a golf course, I don't know if there is now, but that's all the leftover water that the air gate was.
There's always things that incentivize for one thing, then has a a cause and effect on others as well. I was saying about earlier, we're talking about water. I put in an Ogden man water. And it's great, probably saved my marriage, honestly. But my kids and probably myself waste a crap ton of water now, because we don't have to get out, you're not running out. So we incentivize doing that.
Well, the older you get, the more you'll appreciate that.
So I've got a a high functioning autistic kid, Asperger's, I mean, he's got, he's got a thirty five on the ACT, incredible kid. Uh, and, um, I had to install a timer light switch in the bathroom because of, uh. Just get in the, get in the tub and just sleep there, you know, for a while in the morning, just had a hard time.
He's he's not wasting any more water, he's in the tub, it's the shower that gets up there for.
No, sorry, sorry. Lay down as the shower, anyway, just didn't want to wake up in the morning.
Don't give my wife that idea about.
I had to put a tower, timer, because by the time I got in the shower, I was showing up to work with. Good, no, that's a little later we get to more loose, uh, so, uh, okay, public safety. Any comments, questions, concerns, thoughts on public safety?
Looks good to me.
I haven't talked to the sheriff about it yet, see if he's got any concerns or whatever that he wants to address, but it's just.
I don't know if this is. You know how there's the electronic speed limit signs to tell you how fast you're going? We're getting a few more of that, but I personally would like to see a little bit more of those.
Permanently installed?
Yeah.
Great.
I mean, thirty five hundred, we were talking, like, when you're talking about your thirty on a smaller road, it keeps people going slower. I agree, just because I live on thirty five hundred, as soon as they widen the road. Now, everybody else thinks it's sixty seven.
I got a story for you about that, hang on a second, permanently, permanently install. Uh, speed limit signs. I like the ones that also flash the, uh, white strobe as if it's taking a picture of you.
It's going to be like worship wells.
They're pricey, they're like, they're like five and eight thousand, yeah.
We just like them named stop signs.
You know, like, is when they get thirty five hundred and twenty five fifty, you know, like, they will only flash for so long, and then after, like, how much do they fall?
You mean, uh, replaced because of the, uh, the lights? If they're LED, they should last very long.
You put the same stop sign in several different places and guess what, thirty two hundred still works. A different contractor did the other side of it. Same stop sign, but that's what they don't work.
Are they solar panels?
Well, that's the same for speeding thing, but I don't know what makes more. Well, the thing they could do with the speed limit thing, this is, well, when you go ten over, you get a bill for two hundred bucks in the mail.
You just have to buy a bunch of cameras to do that.
Yeah, well. Charlie, you can put that up to Long Beach Valley.
The cameras?
So as far as safety goes, I like that.
I got it, I got it on the list, uh, the store.
So where's this, uh, seven twelve, uh, twelfth street? The traffic office is the sheriff's office. Okay. I thought maybe they had went down by.
It's just about time for me to get back.
The doors coming to Hollywood Way.
So when it comes to speed and design of of roadways the state standard is to. Host the speed limit what eighty five percent of your traffic is going have I told you guys the story before? So the idea so if you're if your traffic if eight it's eighty fifth percentile let's just say eighty five percent of your traffic is going fifty miles an hour. Then you're essentially required to host the speed limit within five miles an hour of that speed the eighty fifth percentile speed. And so the double edged sword is we filled these facilities to be safe. Wide open facilities. Super fast posted at the same speed limit that was before we claimed that the design speed is thirty five miles an hour. But then it just that speed starts incrementally progressing up because we do a speed study in terms of everybody's going faster. We provide more safety improvements do another speed study also then everyone's going faster again this is why the freeways keep on going up. Yes, that's that's why every everything is going up.
There was an environmental.
So the expiration it went from fifty five to sixty five but it's seventy. So it's just it is just gonna keep going.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay, sixty five, okay, give it a minute, give it a minute.
When they do a speech study I'm sure.
But.
You do seventy down that road and they're blowing by.
They've got some some facilities in Texas following the same rule they're running ninety miles an hour. Anyway, it's just double edged sword sooner or later we're either all gonna be flying at a thousand miles an hour or flying.
Only here when I'm changing irrigation.
I felt like it was better before though wasn't it?
Well, it did have it had a little more lift, yeah, 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 used to go without on a motorcycle.
Public schools not a whole lot we can say with public schools however on the. On the land use map I am showing a few locations for public schools did I show you that last time? Okay, good, just looking at where are we looking at kind of the general location for parks let's put a school next to it that doesn't mean we're gonna be able to tell the school where to go. But if we do ever want to tell the school where to go.
The school's telling us where to go right now remember?
Yeah. Some sort of language that work with I I think it's huge strange that we've got two counties. Organizations working against each other kind of like. We can help them acquire the right land that we want maybe we can help because.
That's exactly the thought.
So some sort of language that say work with the.
Try and work with the school board good luck.
Trying. I dare you.
And.
See how well see how well that's getting us out. So hey, go for it.
I I think if they if there was more long term. Coordination.
I agree.
It's changing it's Dr. Jeff Stevens now and then Gina Butter.
So the new superintendent new facilities manager so we have an opportunity now to start working with them really well. Kind of kind of sad and I mean I I don't know people personality very well but it's it's kind of sad that we have to wait through attrition for things to change.
No, I I think it's noble to try and work with them but when you can buy and sell property at your will and not put a school on it who are you gonna listen to?
Right, sorry. It'd be nice if we could sit down with them because they're they're they still have their strategic planning would be nice if we could sit down with them and say hey well for example Ogden City and Ogden School District. They've got agreement what is it called shared use agreement with parks and schools right next to each other. I mean if we can encourage the county and the school district to work similarly or the park district and the and the school district work similarly that would be awesome.
They do a little bit they try I mean you look at gyms you know because not everybody can afford to build gyms and they're. Coming back to the city saying they want multi million dollars.
Yeah.
Now to build different gyms so that the cities can use them and they're pushing themselves. Out of that now the restrictions are there is just.
South on junior high they work with the city there for the school and the community.
And that goes to credit for not not the South on. Depending on the people. Easier to work with so maybe this change would give us.
And I think we should initiate it really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's fine to initiate there remember the two assembly known by next twenty acres. It's around the block. So I don't know.
The elementary school. Oh, yes, yes, it was north and west a little bit right across the canal, yeah.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure. If we're just aware of the properties that the school district is investing money in then we can.
And that's kind of my point it it's you and then you don't and then you play which which one are they gonna build on right and they don't even know that. So.
Then we know which ones to rezone to open space.
Yeah, there's thirty thousand a acre now.
But they're putting this school they're trying to annex over into West Haven and they were gonna put this school in part of it but actually build on the other half. I swear.
It happened at thirty three hundred and thirty and fifty one hundred left.
And it kind of makes sense because it does give them some money if it goes to the school building but I was really surprised to see that.
Well, then they just turn and buy the property and now unconfirmed but now they're scrapping one whole school project because construction costs have gone up so much.
That one? That one?
No. No, well, it's already under construction so that I heard the one they're not rebuilding the one up north.
That one that one over there thirty three fifty one hasn't been.
But they're supposed to.
Guys admit you stay overtime. Eventually he might be. That's it so I mean the next page that you see is just placeholders for everything that we just talked about so next time. Next time we'll have a more complete plan thank you so much and if you think of anything else in regards to utilities or services because there's not a ton about services on here.
Joe you need to cover the next question because that's where your question's gonna hit on. Well, I I about the ordinance is following the general plan right?
That what you said? But my biggest thing is. I know our infrastructure is supposed to be developed from what I understand from the new development coming in correct? Yes, where are you drawing the line so if I'm just a single person building a lot and that sewer is. A thousand feet away from me so I got a time.
No, no.
Okay.
There are limits but within so close you do.
Like three hundred feet a lot of agencies say with this three hundred feet you're gonna have to top.
This was one on a personal note if I wanted to build down the road on where my property is. Unless it development gets put on that because I want a dead end road I have to build fifteen hundred feet of road. And so I don't want that to be a problem for anybody else.
We're we're changing the rules so even on even on the roadway. One, two, three, four lot subdivisions that don't make sense.
Okay, yeah.